I am calling to order the meeting of Tuesday, February 10th, of the Santa Barbara School Board. We are returning to regular session and we will open with a pledge of allegiance. Please rise.
Ms. Flores.
Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Alma Flores y estoy aquí para traducir. Si alguien necesita los servicios, estar en la parte de atrás. Gracias.
Thank you. We do have headsets available for the hearing impaired. You can notify us if you need that. And introductions, proclamations, presentations, or recognitions. Dr. Sarves.
Well, we're pleased to have with us tonight Santa Barbara Junior High School Principal, John Beckio. John, if you would come forward, he's here to share some important news about his school. And we have a great teacher, John Houchen, and students to update the board on the digital arts class.
Thank you. Well, I'll start. I know it went out in e-news today and I hope you got a chance to read it, but we had an exciting day yesterday, being named by the Women's Fund of Santa Barbara as a recipient for a $70,000 donation grant. Yeah, so we will be, we asked for that money to sustain our core adventure program, which is a program that's really aimed at connecting some of our most, actually, our most at-risk students to school and connecting with their families and these students by through home visits and parent classes and then actually having a case manager for these students during the school day. So that was some exciting news and I wanted to share that with you. And then I also wanted to introduce John Houchen, who's, since I've known him, been doing quite amazing work at Santa Barbara Junior High, but this year in particular, he embarked upon a digital arts class, the first of its kind at the junior high level. And I'm going to let him share a little bit about that, but I'm very proud of what he's doing and I'm proud of his students. And so I'm going to introduce him and have him tell you about it. John?
Let me also announce that Dos Pueblos Engineering Academy received a $150,000 grant from the same organization to be used toward their new building fund.
All right, well, we're getting our technology in order here. I'm John Houchen, art teacher, and I'm also teaching a class in digital arts and photography at Santa Barbara Junior. I'd like to introduce a couple of students who were in that digital arts class. If you could come up, please. Come on over. This is Edziri Hernandez and Luis Zuniga. These are both seventh grade students who are in, who took the class during first semester. And both of them really produced some exceptional work. Now, a couple of things I'll tell you about the class before I show you a few images that these students and others have done, is that it is a pathway class to the Multimedia and Design Academy at Santa Barbara High. And it's a class that we have actually used art grant monies to fund buying enough digital Nikon cameras for the entire student group. We also have outfitted our school computer lab with Photoshop CS3, Painter 8, and we've purchased Wacom tablets, which are a pressure-sensitive tablet that allow you to do fine detail work and to create paintings and artwork digitally. So this is something that these students have experienced this semester. And I've also had the opportunity, go into iPhoto, John. I've had the opportunity to bring my advanced art class more and more into the gallery, I mean, into the computer lab to utilize this facility and to create some really amazing products. Just recently, for instance, I was able to teach the, you know, go to the digital art showcase slideshow. I was able to teach the advanced art class enough Photoshop tools to create a collage of architecture, antiquity, and contemporary art combined into one image. And they did a very outstanding job and I was very pleased with that. So a lot of things are happening with the lab and the equipment that we purchase, not just with the digital arts class. Now, very quickly, our show. We started the year having the opportunity to photograph an antique Bugatti Roadster. So students were out there doing that, took it into the lab, did some magic with Photoshop in the lab on these images. And as you can see, different students took different approaches, honing in on detail and really creating something that's beyond the scope of the norm. I believe this is Edziri's photo. And this photo was in an art show this past December, which I'll tell you about. This is another student's completely different view. Part of, part of this class is establishing viewpoints, finding new viewpoints, finding ways to open students' eyes. And Luis, this is your photo. You can see that they saw amazing things in this car. We also had the opportunity to photograph the architecture and details of Santa Barbara Junior High, which this is. And in the process, students like Sam Borden photographed this rose, I believe, is this yours, Edziri? No, Luis? No, sorry. Okay, this is one of the palm trees in our campus. And this is the kiosk for the Marjorie Luke, which I think is a very poetic view, and that's Luis's photo. And then Edziri was seeing this amazing design, very modern, very contemporary, of shadows and decided to capture that. And this is also Edziri's photograph of some of the agave plants at our school. So the students are really drawn into design and detail in this process. Then we went to the Santa Barbara Harbor with the idea of photographing reflections in the water and seeing what kind of magic would be there. This is one of Luis's photos. I think it's almost like a sculpture against the backdrop. These are pretty powerful on the big screen, I can see that. It's actually, and this is one of Luis's shots of the harbor, which I think is worthy of making a card. It's really beautiful. And this is a photo by Lucas Stark. We took a field trip to the Getty Center in Los Angeles with the idea of photographing the architecture, but students also found a lot of other details. This is one of Edziri's photos of the sculpture at the entrance where she's really capturing the textures of the architecture as well as the artwork. Another student's kind of poetic view of one of the sculptures there. And I think this is Edziri's self-portrait, right? But very complex, really. Nothing straightforward about any of this. And there's a beautiful garden at the Getty and one of the students created this from their photo of one of the plants in the garden. More architectural detail. The Richard Meyer architecture was just really a feast for the students. And each of them worked with a professional photographer in groups of six. So we went down as a group of adults and students. And this is one of Luis's photos at the Getty. And as you can see, it involves interior and exterior architecture. Students also, as I said, have access to ways to draw on the computer. And this was done with Painter 8. This is another creation that was done using that program. Students in this class experimented as well with making paintings. This is one single cell of a painting that was created by a student. And it was put together into this symmetrical collage to make a really, I think, really interesting image. The advanced class is doing this as well. Students brought from home photographs that were treasured that needed restoration and we did learn restoration techniques that we employed. These are shots from our show at Pierre Lefond Bistro in December. We were part of the first Thursday open house. And this is a shot of the installation, another shot there at Pierre Lefond. Sammy Scammer was our partner in that show. And here's Edziri on the cover of People Magazine. And this is really just a small sample of what we've done this semester, but I wanted to keep it short and just give you an idea or a taste of how this is going, so. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Edziri and Luis, you are amazing artists and thank you for coming to share this with us. You will be able to see it on Channel 18 this Saturday at 5:00 if you want to see it on the small screen at home. But Mr. Houchen, I am always so astounded at the work that your students do. And I know how much they learn in your class and how much they enjoy your class, and I just can't thank you enough for the work that you do for our students.
Thank you so much.
And I just wanted to mention to the board that, that John spoke about grant money that helped us get this off the ground. And the downtown Rotary Club really came through for Santa Barbara Junior High, supported us with about roughly $25,000, both to support our music program and buy, purchase brand-new instruments for our kids and also to help us get this class off the ground. So I wanted to mention that to you as well. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And we will now move on to the superintendent's report.
Well, it's been three months since the state legislature was requested to take action on the rapidly deteriorating state budget. The situation grows worse by the day and there is really no end in sight. We keep hearing that something will happen. Something has not happened. We have limited options in coping with the budget crisis because decisions have not been made at the state level. We have frozen hiring and spending and we are meeting with school staff across the district to tell our employees what's happening and to get their ideas about what we can do to enhance our revenues and to cut our expenses. I invite the board and the public to send their ideas to me or to Deputy Superintendent Eric Smith. We don't care if people even identify themselves. Anonymous notes are fine. Written on a brown paper wrapper would be just fine. But it's time to put the ideas on the table so that we can cost them out and be able to return to the board with a list so that the board can make good decisions about it. The board will have to finalize decisions on cuts in April according to the timeline that we adopted, once we have the second interim budget report and can set the targets for, for the amounts that we will need to cut. Meanwhile, we will have to send out layoff notices in March without knowing what decisions the state will finally make. Today's congressional senate vote stripped out both money for school construction and money to offset cuts at the state level, specifically those targeted at, at school districts. The senate version was scaled back in terms of ongoing dollars for Title I and special education and IDIkea, excuse me, and we're not optimistic that much funding will be restored. But instruction continues and we have started physical fitness testing in fifth grade and we'll pick up physical fitness testing for seventh and ninth graders on March 2nd. We've also been working with FICMAT. FICMAT is the organization, the Fiscal Crisis Management and Assistance Team that is conducting our special education review and evaluation. We're sending out their special education survey. The survey, including Spanish translation, is being sent to, well, the Spanish translation is being sent to the parents, parents of 1,978 students, and it is being sent to the staff, 334 special education staff members. These are two different surveys. The survey is confidential and survey participants will mail their completed survey directly to FICMAT. We anticipate that the mailing will reach households by the end of the week or beginning of next week. They wanted to get the surveys out immediately. They will be coming back in February for a visitation. They'll be coming back in March for parent interviews and focus meetings. My office regularly issues a report to the board called the Board Brief. It's a collection of reports and articles on school and district matters. A copy is available of the January 30 board brief. It's on display in the reception area or in my office. I'd like to highlight just two items from the last board brief. First, there was a board brief update on elementary report cards. The board will have a report on elementary report cards at an upcoming meeting in March. And second, the board saw information on deferred maintenance projects and repairs. Well, tax time is upon us again and Santa Barbara High School's Volunteer Income Tax Assistance Program is once again in full swing. For the 14th year, students are offering free tax preparation for low to moderate income workers. And this year, there are 30 IRS-trained students in the program. I think the last couple of years, they've been doing over 600 returns. They've been e-filing those returns. It's the only high school in the, in the nation that's qualified to do so. Upcoming events. District Honor Band is on February 25th. Dos Pueblos High School's Jazz Festival and a night of big bands will take place on March 7th. The District String Festival on March 9th. And our district's spring theater performances begin in March. And copies of our Theater Fest 2009 are available here for board members on the dais and over on the side table. And they are, this is the same report that you saw, the same listing that you saw at our, at our last meeting. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Student report. Do we have a representative from San Marcos?
No, we don't tonight and purposely not. On the first meeting of each month, we have a student report. Because of tonight's big cross-town basketball game between San Marcos and Santa Barbara High Schools, our San Marcos student representative would rather be at the game. Now, I don't understand why the board isn't a lot more exciting than a basketball game, but the student report has been rescheduled for our next meeting.
Okay. Announcement of closed session action. The board moved in closed session on item B2, Conference with Legal Counsel Existing Litigation. The board moved to ratify the partial settlement agreement and release dated February 5th, 2009. It was moved by Mr. Heron and seconded by Mrs. Cordero and it passed 4-0 with Dr. Noel absent. C4, Acceptance of Donations. Oh, sorry, I'm trying to skip public comment. Yes, it was seconded by Mrs. Cordero. C3, Public Comment. Do we have any public comment?
None have been turned in, no.
Okay.
Why don't we clarify?
Yeah, this is only public comment on items that are not on the agenda, so if there were something, okay. C4, Acceptance of Donations.
Move to approve with gratitude or move to accept with gratitude? Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It passes unanimously. And...
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Just in case the audience doesn't, there was one from QAD for $25,000, which was for a technology grant. So I'd like to especially thank QAD for $25,000.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
All right, moving on to the consent agenda. Are there any items to be pulled? Dr. Noel?
I have small questions.
Okay.
D2, D5.
Hold on, D2. D2, D5, D11, D14, and D15. Okay, we'll pull those items. Yes. D5 has been pulled.
We're taking it off the agenda.
Has been completely pulled, okay. All right. You'll notice that there was a small correction on the exhibit for item D4, 5144. But is there a motion to accept the rest of the, to approve the rest of the consent items?
We'll move.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. It passes unanimously. Great. And with that, we'll move on to item E1, the action agenda. Approval of special...
I'm sorry, Madam Chair. On D4, just one minor question. On page 40, there's a, in brackets, something that says "staff recommends." By approving that, did we approve the staff recommendation?
No, we approved the, the wording that the board had agreed to. All right, moving on to item E1, Approval of Special Education Parent Resource Position.
This is an item we discussed at our last meeting. Robin Swawski, our Associate Superintendent, will make the presentation.
Okay.
Probably will not be very long.
Right, not long at all, because we adjusted the job description or position according to the conversation, kind of a long one last time. Some of the changes are, it is a bilingual position. We have upped the amount, the salary per hour from 15 to 19. We've taken out many of the responsibilities that were much more technical and when we really looked at the job and what we saw this position being as a real liaison resource person, you notice the title is different, parent resource. A lot of that was unnecessary, so we changed that. We were sensitive to the ADA issues around being able to be, make use of transportation, not necessarily have to drive a car and other things like that. We changed the education and experience to any combination of education, training, and experience that demonstrates the ability to perform the functions noted above. So I'm hoping we captured everything from the discussion last time, but I'm happy to take suggestions again or questions.
Mrs. Cordero?
I just wanted to thank you for the clarifications that you made. I thought the changes that you made made the purpose and function of the position much clearer than it had been last time, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yes, Mrs. Deacon?
I just wanted to say also, I wasn't here, but I did watch the DVD and I am glad that those changes were incorporated. And I'm also glad that the education was left the way it was to a certain extent, because I really started thinking about the fact that work experience and life experiences can contribute to this job perhaps more than a college degree. So I think it's the right way to go.
Mr. Heron?
Yes, I'm just curious, on an hourly employee, and you have benefits include holidays, vacation, and sick leave. How on an hourly employee do you calculate holidays, vacation, and sick leave?
That's a good question. I guess benefits meaning that you wouldn't work on holidays, but why would you work on holidays? I, you know, I'll have to ask personnel, they put that part, I think it's probably not needed. Yes.
This is hourly. It would be, it would be on a time log basis.
Right. Good question. And that's probably just on the regular template from our personnel office and nobody caught it, so thank you.
In fact, I would ask you to exclude that sentence in the approval.
Yes, let's just take that out.
Any other board questions or comments? Do we have public comment on this item?
No public comment.
No public comment on it? Dr. Noel?
I just wonder if we might put a range here and allow personnel, depending on what kind of responses, to get, have some possibility to pay a little more.
Can you address that? I don't know what the CSEA or what sort of negotiation you have.
What we were trying to be very sensitive to were our current CSEA, our Classified Employees Union, the, the range of pay that we have with our regular members right now and our current staff. And with the experience needed, the education, the actual job description, we're really pushing the upper limit with this, quite a bit, actually.
Mrs. Cordero?
I was just going to make a motion if we're ready for that. I move to approve the special education parent resource position with the deletion of the sentence relative to benefits.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? It passes unanimously. All right, moving on to E2, Board Action on Student Expulsion Case Numbers 0809-24, 0809-25, and 0708-67. First of all, 0809-24 has been pulled. So let's move on to the next on the list.
In case 0809-25, move to uphold the findings and recommendations of the hearing panel.
All those in favor?
Aye.
It passes unanimously.
In the case of 0708-67, move to approve the request to return to the, return to the home high school.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And it passes unanimously. All right, well, we have whizzed through our action agenda and at this point, it's only 7:25. We can move on to, obviously, we will, we will not go to F1 at this time, but I'm wondering if we want to skip ahead to F2 and then come back to F1 at 7:55.
We could certainly do that.
Thank you.
Tell the audience why we're waiting until 7:55.
Well, we want to be sure that everybody that's here about basic aid projections in the elementary district and inter-district transfer students gets a chance to be here for the beginning of that staff report. So let's go ahead and move on to the status of the Santa Barbara School District's K-12 truancy program.
Thank you very much.
This is Michael Gonzalez, our director of many things.
Thank you. Unfortunately, because of budget shortfalls that hit the county of Santa Barbara, they were forced to make decisions that essentially ended the district attorney's role in the truancy program that we've been a partner with for the last 11 years. The, that move not only affected this school district, it affected every single public school district in Santa Barbara County. The result was, or a compromise was, the district, the County Board of Supervisors did permit one district attorney representative to get together as a resource to all of the public school districts in the county to begin to build their own truancy program. And that's what we've embarked on for the past semester. We took a look at a number of different models. The model that we finally settled on was a hybrid of what currently is in place up at the Lompoc Unified School District. Lompoc, let me back up. What it meant not to have the district attorney's involvement in the truancy program is that the county SARB, the Student Attendance Review Board, which is the board that our most truant students would eventually be sent to before they entered the legal system, that organization no longer exists. We are authorized to create a local SARB and in the document, in the attachment F2, I speak to the creation of a local SARB. And we're in the process of contacting our partners to do just that. But going back to Lompoc, because they could no longer rely on the weight of the district attorney's office or a judge or probation to ask parents to uphold the compulsory education law, we took a look at Lompoc. And what Lompoc has been doing for some time, they reached an agreement with their law enforcement agency where the SARB, their local SARB, makes a recommendation to law enforcement for a $100 fine. a recommendation to law enforcement for a $100 fine in lieu of going before a judge or sitting down with probation. And for Lompoc, that's been a very effective mechanism to sway parents to do their very best to get their truant children, students, back into school. That's the kind of system that we hope to be able to implement in our district, and we'll bring, bring that recommendation back to you folks when we've got an authorization. Right now, we're in negotiations with the district attorney's office to see, in South County, will the Santa Barbara Sheriff's Department and will the Santa Barbara Police Department, will they permit a SARB created within the district? Will it permit this SARB to make a recommendation for a $100 citation for students and their parents who are absolutely choose not to attend our schools? We have not heard yet from these folks if they'll permit that to happen or not. The other major change is that in the previous system, all of those letters that went home notifying parents of truancies all carried the letterhead of the Santa Barbara District Attorney's Office. That is no longer the case. We no longer have the ability to send those letters out. Those letters will now reflect the Santa Barbara School District. And so that's pretty much brings you up to speed with where we are with our truancy program. In this attachment, I've also indicated that a lot of the onus for the truancy program will fall on our individual schools and a local SARB, and that has forced us to reduce the number of meetings in the truancy program. So when we get authorization, if we get authorization from the Santa Barbara Police Department and the Sheriff's Department for this $100 fine, we will bring back that recommendation to the board for your approval. And I hope that we can do such a thing, bring that recommendation back to you within a month or so. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Board members? Dr. Noel?
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. In looking this over, I see one, what to me is a glaring omission, and perhaps I'm just not reading it carefully enough, but I don't see any parent participation on the so-called SARB, the Student Attendance Review Board.
Thank you for pointing it out. We're, we're in the process of actually studying that. As you know, the, there are some confidentiality issues that we have not yet been able to address adequately, i.e., can parents sit on a SARB and hear very confidential information about other students? We're waiting to have that clarified for us before we make a decision to have parents on our SARB. It is my understanding, and I've had the opportunity to be a member of a local SARB in a previous district, and parents weren't ever included as part of that review board, but we're gonna explore if that's possible here.
I would, I would certainly encourage you to do so, because it seems to me that when parents hear from their, their peers that there's a problem, and that, and that the community of which they're part cares about attendance for a variety of reasons, that it will, I would think in some ways, could have more impact than hearing from a group of, kind of the usual agencies, which I think for a lot of people is just a turnoff. If we, if there's a way to get to work, work in parent involvement, I think it'd be extremely helpful.
Thank you.
Otherwise, I really like, I like the way this sounds.
Mrs. Deacon?
One quick question, in the absence of a, a current SARB, have we seen truancy on the rise?
Yes, we will, in a subsequent report to you with the recommendation, if we do get involved with citations, bring those numbers to you. And I think all of the school districts have noticed a rise in truancy at our schools.
Mrs. Cordero?
Well, I think you may have addressed my first question, which I was gonna ask about the number of students, but maybe that'll come in the, in the report, so I can wait on that. The second question I had was in step number two. It's a second notification of truancy, et cetera, et cetera. It refers to the second notification, but it doesn't identify what would trigger the second notification.
The, there's a, a number of different ways to, to handle it, but essentially, what the law's at the first letter is any additional, the first letter is generated at three days. Any additional truancy beyond that triggers that second letter. And you can see in step three that six or more days triggers the, the third letter, so I should have indicated that. So four or more is essentially the simplest answer.
Okay, and then that, that was kind of the same question I had with the fourth notification.
Right.
Which then takes it to SARB.
It is, in the model that we're talking about right now, any truances beyond the six days, or, you know, if you want to compute it at a high school level, any time missing six days of classes constitutes thirty-six periods of truancy. That's what will generate a SARB. Now, I'm going to-
I'm sorry. Six days is step three. So does it have to be beyond that to generate the SARB then?
Correct.
Okay.
But please note too, that though we're very clearly speaking about truancy, as you've read the documents, SARBs not only get involved with truancy, but they also get involved with conduct, but for the purposes of this conversation, we're focusing on absenteeism without excuses, legitimate excuses.
Thank you. Any other board comments or questions? One thing that I wanted to ask about was, this specifically says K-12 truancy program, and one of the issues with the prevency, previous program was that it was really only for the secondary district, seventh through twelfth graders, and this has been a hole in the elementary district. So can you talk a little bit about how this will get tied in with elementary students?
It's, yes. Please know that currently, I believe, we have three schools. Much to my surprise, when we began to research truancy support services in the elementary district, it turned out that three of our schools had contacted our homeless liaison who's partially funded by the Santa Barbara County Education Office and partially funded by our own district. They were relying on his services to do follow-ups on students who were truant. And we very much appreciate Mr. Rodriguez, Ernie Rodriguez, for taking on this responsibility, but we felt it was really the responsibility of this district. And so we began to speak with Ernie about incorporating the best practices that he's been doing into a K-12 truancy program, so that an elementary principal who discovered or was working on a truancy case, instead of contacting Ernie through the Santa Barbara County Education Office, would send it to our internal systems. And those letters that the secondary district is accustomed to doing would be sent to elementary folks. As you can imagine, the, the magnitude of the problem is not as great among elementary as it is among secondary. However, there's a very important principle. What we do know is that youngsters who experience the truancy in their elementary years, by and large, continue that truancy pattern throughout their junior high and high school. So focusing on elementary is a very appropriate way to conduct a truancy program.
Thank you. Mrs. Cordero?
I'm sorry, I just, I had a, a connected question to my first one, and I skipped over. The first question that I said probably will come back in your, in your report, was how many students get the first notification? And then I was gonna follow up with that, with how many students then go on to get the second, et cetera. So, but the underlying question of that was, there's no action required on the part of the parents or the students, other than I assume coming to class, after step one. And so my question was going to be, should we be requiring them to at least meet with the principal, or, or have some kind of contact with the school? But my, the reason I was asking about the numbers is because if the letter succeeds in reducing the number of students who go on to get the second letter by a significant percentage, then maybe there isn't really any necessary step to be taken. But if it doesn't, then maybe we should consider adding some kind of a, an action in step one.
The eleven-year experience with the district attorney's office very clearly shows that the number of students who receive, the number of parents who receive the first letter, as compared to those students needing the second letter, there is a significant drop, i.e., that first letter is very effective. And at this time, we do not plan, besides giving a parent's a due notice, there is no plan to have them meet. Those meetings do not begin until letter two. We will bring you copies of the letters, and any appropriate recommendations, modifications that you choose to make on those letters will be made.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Mr. Herron?
We have one public comment.
Okay.
Public comment from Kate Smith. She missed E one, and requested to speak on that. If it's appropriate, I'd like to give her one extra minute if she wants to talk about E one at the same time.
I'd like to answer the question that you asked of Michael Gonzalez. I'm not sure if it's gonna be taken off my time, but in the truancy proposal that was denied by the Board of Supervisors, the DA herself had a proposal that said the numbers were, ten thousand seven hundred ninety-two students last year got notices, first notices. And I believe that was in the entire county, but I can't be sure. And two hundred and seventy-two of the students went to the SARB and were pushed into the school-to-prison pipeline. What I can tell you, that I told the Board of Supervisors, that is crucial for you to understand, is that the SARB purpose, in its mission statement, is to keep the children out of the juvenile justice system. And yet, I asked the Board of Supervisors to take a guess, how many of those students, especially the ones that were pushed into the pipeline, how many of them were offered special education assessment, testing, diagnosis, and treatment? Can you guess? What are the records with the SARB? None. Not one. So I'd like to talk about the, Michael Gonzalez said he wasn't sure about a parent being on the SARB. Five years ago, I read the bylaws of the SARB, and it said there has to be a community member. It has to be a parent. This is a mandated person on the SARB. So I applied to be that parent. And I was told that, I'm not sure if it was Shereen Catapush or not, it was a foreign name, that she was the community representative, yet her children were toddlers, and I didn't consider her to be a parent of students that would be in the program. And she was already paid to be there as a member of one of the nonprofits. So when I hear Michael Gonzalez, who is in charge of compliance, and I, five years ago, tried to evaluate how much he knew about special ed, for example, or compliance, and it was zippo, when I hear him say, much to his surprise, I am angered that you didn't know about Ernie-
Kate, you have fifteen more seconds on this topic.
Okay, I'm angered that you didn't know about the best practices. There are hundreds of thousands of truancy prevention and intervention strategies on the web. Policy papers are being put out. ACLU, NAACP, and Marion Wright Edelman's Children's Defense Fund have organized, they are working together. There is what's called a school-to-prison-pipeline.org. It is, the truancy program has been deemed institutionalized racism, and what is coming down the pike to hit you guys for non-compliance and denial of right under color of law is serious. Okay?
Thirty seconds.
Okay.
If you want to talk about the parent resource.
Well, I was here at seven thirty-five, I came in from Irvine, and you had already gone through the issue. I am-
Sometimes we get ahead of agenda, it's rare, but we do.
But what's called, sorry, this is parliamentary procedure. When it is time certain, it is time certain.
And we do make a, a point of putting on the agenda that these items are not time certain unless they're so designated. Your time is up, but thank you very much.
Okay, well, I, I, point of privilege?
No.
What do you mean, no?
We don't do Robert's Rules of Orders with the audience, that is strictly for the board.
But I had the floor. Point of privilege, I don't know if it's been said by-
Your email is out. I have applied, okay. I didn't get my three minutes. We still have ten minutes, and rather than taking a break, if Dr. Hayden's ready. Hayden, sorry.
Madam President, I was gonna ask, because this, we did take up this item almost an hour prior to the time it was posted on our agenda, and while I agree with you that these are not necessarily time certain, I'm wondering if we could maybe allow any speakers who come in later-
If, if people come in late, absolutely.
To address this issue, and I was wondering, rather than taking up another item that, I don't know if, if this next item will be something that people would be here to, to speak about or not, but I wondered, given that we have some time, could we go back to the consent agenda and take those items, and that way we're not running the risk of-
Absolutely, that's fine with me if, if there are no objections from the board. Sorry, Dr. Hayden, you have to wait again. All right, they were items. D two. Let's start with D two, Dr. Noel.
My question, I see that this is an April sixteenth through nineteenth travel date, and I know we have a spending freeze for conference travel. I recognize this is Title II, and probably the freeze only applies to the general fund.
Actually, the freeze applies for categoricals that are state categoricals. That would be our school improvement, the block grant, EIA. We actually need to spend, it's to our advantage to spend every penny of our federal money so that we can claim the indirect, the indirect percentage on that. So we want to spend all of our Title I, Title II, Title III, Title IV, all of those.
Well, that answered my question, thank you.
Is there a motion? Is there a motion on item D two?
I move to approve that item.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it passes unanimously. Then there was item D eleven. Dr. Noel?
Well, yeah, I'm just trying to find my notes on it, and I can't find any, so I must have asked you to pull that by mistake.
No, I can tell you what your note probably said, if you want me to, Dr. Noel.
Please do.
Yes, Mr. Herron.
I found it strange, and since our minds are sort of the same, it says there's supposed to be a visit, but in fact, there's not a visit. And I'm sure you must have picked up on that. And what, how, how can they not do a visit when the law says they're supposed to do a visit?
And maybe Mr. Gonzalez wants to respond to that?
Mr. Gonzalez, our Director of Student Services, can respond to that.
I actually do not have a good answer. We explored with the county, how is it that I'm going to submit to our board a report that indicates there was no visit? And to further complicate things, you previously approved that second page that has the complaints, and for that particular period, there were no complaints. And so I can only share with you that the county instructed that this report was to be presented to the board, and that's what we've done. I will share with you that my experience has been that they do visit those sites twice a year. And I believe that some of you, some of the board members have seen- And I believe that some of you, some of the Board members have seen the previous report. This report unfortunately did not have, did not include a visit or a review.
Is there any other comment?
I was just going to say, Dr. Sarvis may recall, I actually raised the same point. And I think we do need some clarification from the county, because I don't see how we can approve a review with no visit.
We'll ask for written clarification, put it in the Board brief.
All right. So that item is pulled. D14. Approval of purchase order report for the period January 21 through February 3. Dr. Noel?
Was I. Vendor, Liebert Cassidy Whitmore, $11,302, legal services. I would ask that the Board be notified with a little note about what that was for.
All right. Assuming that we do get that report in the near future, is there a motion on this item?
I move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes unanimously.
15.
I have a public comment about that.
No. Is there a public comment on?
I called it in. I was downtown, I called it in to.
Oh, Mrs. Smith, actually, this is not what you're thinking. This is something completely different.
The Hughes Bill statue?
We haven't gotten to that one yet. D15. Approval of Resolution Number 0809-25. Dr. Noel, you pulled that?
Yeah, I just don't understand this. I understand the one-time-only amounts. I don't understand the continuing costs.
It's actually continuing revenue. It's continuing revenue, not cost.
Re, ah.
Yeah, so there's a one-time settlement amount.
Okay.
In each district in revenue, and then there's some ongoing revenues. And actually, what this is, is basically a prelude to a settlement agreement that 85% of the school districts in the state of California must agree to, to hold the state harmless for future claims.
We were going to put this on open session to give you a heads-up about this, but in consideration of time, we decided to put it on consent.
Yeah, okay.
Yes.
I move to approve.
We do have public comment on this one?
We have one comment from somebody who says Agenda Item Hughes Bill, but no name, no nothing else.
The Hughes Bill had to do with behavioral intervention plans, and it was, these are what are called unmandated costs. It's been a 14-year legal battle. The estimated cost has been about $222 million, and $515 million will now come into the SLPA and to the general fund and to the county, the county gets administrative funds, for reimbursement of behavioral assessments and consultants. On October 18, I tried to give you a heads-up as to what was happening. Anise McNeil was told that the Hughes Bill settlement is coming in. It used to be, when, for example, a $1,500 behavioral, private behavioral assessment came in, Sharon Watt would litigate it. She would deny it, and she would charge the district $50,000 to do that. In my case, the price was a $4,500 behavioral intervention, private assessment. And I was sued. They were not going to pay it. The eventual cost was $1.5 million for that lawsuit. Anise shuffled the special education teachers so that they were all, they all had new cases. Then she pulled all the one-on-one aides. One-on-one aides are expensive. That was triggering private assessments. On October 18, I told you, there are private assessments coming out of the special education department to the tune of $30,000 per consultant, and it was coming out of the general fund. Why is that? Why is that, that hundreds of thousands of dollars of private consultants were now going to be what's called encroachment, coming out of the general fund instead of special education? It's because there's $515 million coming in to reimburse 14 years of behavioral consultants and assessments. On January 21, over 100 staff members in this district and the county went to learn how to do behavioral assessments, because now what they're going to do, instead of having private aides.
30 seconds, Kate.
Instead of having private aides, there will be a huge influx of behavioral intervention plans. That's called an IBIP. And the consultants that are paid at, you know, $30,000, they're called IBippers. And there's an IBICAM. That's now going to be the plan for the district. The one-on-one aides were pulled unilaterally.
Kate, your time is up, and thank you for the education. This issue is whether we approve this resolution in order to get the funds.
And we have a motion on the floor by Dr. Noel. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It passes unanimously. All right. And with that, we will now move back to our conference agenda item F1. Follow-up report on basic aid projections in the elementary district and inter-district transfer students.
I'm going to ask Meg Jete, our Director of Fiscal Services, to speak in just a moment. Before I do, though, I'd like to say that the Board has seen basic aid projections in the past. We've taken a look at these over the years. The Board just reviewed a basic aid projection at its last meeting on January 20. What makes tonight's discussion about basic aid different from the previous discussions is the fiscal context for that discussion. These are unprecedented times. The state budget crisis is enormous compared to what it was just one year ago when we were forced to cut $4 million from our district budget. The district, both districts, are currently reliant on state funding. The governor's budget proposal means $6 million in lost revenue to the districts. We don't know how this will all turn out with the state in six months' time. Hopefully, it will only be six months. We do know that the legislature has not acted. We're in the third month of that. We do know that we will need to make serious budget cuts this spring. And the depth of the state budget crisis, meanwhile, is hitting unimaginable proportions with no end in sight. It's growing worse by the day. Every day of inaction makes it worse. And today's vote in Congress, the federal Congress, does not hold much hope for relief at the federal level. Well, tonight's agenda item spells out a number of options. They are painful options, and these are painful decisions. We've heard from a number of parents whose children attend our schools, of families that do not reside in the district. I sent them a letter directly to tell them that we were having this discussion and why. These are parents who chose a school that their child will attend, or their children attend, and they chose it because it was the best fit for their child or their children, and they are understandably concerned. I've also heard from many principals and from staff members, they're concerned for different reasons. The possibility of returning transfer students holds a promise of keeping valued programs, like keeping class sizes in grades kindergarten and through third grade at 20 to 1. And this, of course, is in the face of severe budget cuts. In an effort to mitigate the effect of denying inter-district transfers to families, I did approach a number of the districts around our district that are basic aid districts, and I asked them directly whether they were interested in funding the students so that they could remain in our schools and at some reduced rate, so that it wouldn't be our full cost. It would be something like, like base revenue limit for the districts. At this point, they are not interested. They have fine schools, they have specialized programs, and they would work hard to make good homes for their children. We've also spoken to other districts, especially to the south, like Ventura. You know, Ventura County has 100,000 commuters. Many of them come north, many more go south. The schools in Ventura have a lot of experience in working with families who are commuter families, and they have rich after-school programs to serve those families. Honestly, the biggest issue is simply this, that if we don't go deeply enough into basic aid, we will not be able to save vital programs like class size reduction for the students of the elementary district. And the question is literally whether maintaining inter-district transfers will then require us to cut services to students in our elementary district. These are both, both decisions that have a human cost. I'd like Meg Jete, our Director of Fiscal Services, to present the updated district aid projections and different scenarios. And Board members, I'm sure you will also want to ask Eric Smith, our Deputy Superintendent, about the economic repercussions in light of upcoming budget cuts.
And, Mr. Jete, before you start, Mr. Herron had a comment?
Yes. If there's anyone in the audience who is going to speak on this topic that we have not reported for, can you please turn it in? We're going to have to judge how much time each person can get to speak, and it will help us to know how many are here to speak.
Right. And we'll go ahead and close to public comment at this time. So if you want to get yours in, in the next 10 seconds, that's good. Thank you.
Dave, can we get that bigger? There we go. Thank you.
Okay. I was asked to do several scenarios, and once again, this is a scaled-down version of the revenue limit calculation. So it makes it less complicated. So in column A, we have the 2009-10 adopted budget with the ongoing mid-year cuts, less 258 students, which is all the inter-district transfers. That is relieving, oh, wait, 200, sorry, that should be 300. That's 300, all inter-district transfers. ADA? I'm sorry.
I think what she's pointing out is that the column title says less 258, but she actually meant, it should say less 300 in the column title. She runs the calculation with less 300.
Right.
It's that way all the way across.
It's all the way across, because I think you discount the 42 kindergarten students that we aren't going to take in new. So every column is 42.
Short.
Short. And I think it's the kindergarten.
Yeah, that's right. So what we're doing in column A is we start off with 4,491.65 ADA. This is a little bit higher than what our, my first calculation was, because we didn't have good numbers for P1, which was back in October.
And can you explain what P1 is?
P1 is the period-one attendance calculation, which every district, school district does. Every school does, sends in their attendance, and we calculate it, and we report it to the state. In that number that we had at the fir, when I gave my first projections, we had not gotten confirmation from the state about our emergency waivers, which were because of the T fire. So now I have better numbers regarding that. So they're up a little bit for 910. Okay, so our base revenue limit includes the 5% COLA that they're anticipating for in 910, and it gives you a base revenue limit, a little bit more money for Meals for Needy, which is $122,000. That may go up a little bit once we do our P2 projections, which is our second attendance projections, which will be right around, you'll see the second interim at March 10th Board meeting. So the revenue limit, that's subject to the deficit, which is almost about 9%, is your 25 million, and you times it by your almost 9%, almost 10% of the, oh, I'm sorry, this is 16.68%, which is the deficit from last year, from 89 and this, and 910. And it gives us a total deficit of revenue of 21 million. We have miscellaneous deductions. Then we have less the property taxes and in lieu property taxes, which is to the charter schools. And then we come up with a total property taxes of 22,732,929. We have a county transfer that we pay for, and then our basic aid status at that time would be 1.3 million, which means our property taxes are higher than our calculation for our revenue limit, which is ADA times base revenue limit.
Meg, the revenue limit entitlement would be the 21,540?
Yes.
Okay. And so what you're showing is the property taxes are exceeding that amount by less the adjustment, 1.314.
That's correct.
So that's the amount of property taxes in excess of the state revenue limit entitlement.
That's correct.
And while you're at this point, we get a lot of questions about this in lieu of property taxes to charters, this whole concept about what is this line? What does that really mean? Can you explain that concept?
Sure. Basically, what we do is we receive, for next year, I'm calculating a 2% increase in property taxes, which is your 28 million. I take the total ADA, including charter schools, which is average daily attendance, and I divide that amount into the property taxes, and I get a per ADA dollar amount. And it's about, in the elementary, it's about 5,100. I'm doing this off the top of my head, so. Then, if the charter schools have 700 kids, my, our obligation is to pay that amount up to their general purpose block grant, which is kind of like the revenue limit. So for example, if we had a charter school on the, yeah, thanks. So for example, let's say the revenue, for, if this number, for the charter school was, say, I don't know, $10 million, and we had 1,000 kids in the charter school, and they each got $1,000 worth of property taxes, that would be offsetting their general purpose block grant, just like it offsets ours of local property taxes. Does that make sense?
So the critical thing is, the way we pay them is we actually transfer the property taxes.
Absolutely. So we deduct $6 million in property taxes and give it to our charter schools, because they're locally funded also. So they get like a revenue limit portion and a property tax apportionment. Is that okay?
Thank you.
Okay, good. Okay. So then we go to our next scenario, which is 251 children, and that's K through 5. And we go through the same calculation, and you see that the more children are in, that are, that are here, the less we go into basic aid. And then it goes on to K4. We're $800,000 into basic aid. Just having the K3, we are at about $635,000. And if we just say less kindergarteners in column E, we are not in basic aid anymore.
And, you know, I can't keep out of this discussion. It's, the issue with state aid, state aid is driven upwards either by cost-of-living adjustment and/or student increase. So what she's showing you there is when there's less, when basically the inner districts are retained at a higher level, there's more state aid that keeps you out of basic aid, because it's the interrelationship between state aid and property taxes that you're looking at. Obviously, COLA is off the table, because the deficit has more than negated that. So what we're really looking at is the interrelationship between state aid and property taxes. However, it should be mentioned that the deficit factor that's being applied to state aid is what's really driving you into basic aid in the first place.
Exactly.
Any, anything else at this point, Ms. Jete?
No, I'll take questions.
Board members, I don't know if you want to jump into questions with Ms. Jete now. We have public comment. Would you like to hear a public comment and then ask questions, or some clarifications right now? Yes, Mrs. Cordero.
I'm sorry. I had a quick clarification, because I think it would help in the explanation of basic aid, to explain why basic aid status tends to be beneficial to the district. Because when, if you're looking at the graph or the chart here, it looks like we're getting more money by having revenue limit. So for example, in column E, the amount of total revenue limit is larger than it was in column A. in column A, and the total property taxes are the same. So, and just a very general glimpse at it, I don't think it's transparent why it actually works to districts' benefit to be in basic aid.
I would tell you, the way you're getting to basic aid is not the conventional route. I mean, generally what happens is, you know, a nuclear power plant or something locates in your backyard, and your AV goes through the roof, and that drives you up. You're looking at a combination of property taxes and decreasing value in state aid. But in theory, once you get to a point where your basic aid, your property taxes that are in excess of your revenue limit entitlement, no matter whether that's $1,000 or $10 million you get to keep. So if you look at your number of students divided by that base, in theory, your per revenue, per ADA amount could be much, much, much higher than what you would get in revenue limit. The reason it's called revenue limit is there's a limit, and so that's the distinction. So, does that clarify it somewhat?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that people who were watching this, who don't, aren't sort of conversant with school finances would get that piece.
Yeah, usually I use the bucket analogy, and it's included in there.
I'm sure the bucket picture is here, although I have to say that when you look at the bucket picture on the screen, I don't know that it.
It's kind of hazy.
It helps. Any other comments at this point, Mr. Heron?
Yes, I have had a.
Yeah, and it's not in color, so that's a hard one.
Yeah.
Mr. Heron?
Yes, we have had this correspondence by email, but I want to point it out, going back to the chart, one of the assumptions in there is a 2% increase in property taxes. That's about $412,000. So each of those columns of the bottom line, 412 is that 2% property taxes. Historically, we've had 6% or so increase. So 2% is a good assumption, but in a letter from Joe Holland, he estimates in the county the increase will be 1%, and in the Santa Barbara School District, probably a little bit more. And I don't know how that relates to your numbers, but that's a piece of information that was important to me.
I did do some research. Our property taxes increased last year 6.71%. So this year, knowing that what Joe Holland said with 1%, I figured that 2% was a very good estimate. I also talked to Goleta and Hope, and they were both coming in with 2%. And I believe that still could be conservative, but I tend to go more conservative than, say, we'll have 6%, I think, and then it only comes in at 1%.
All right, thank you. Shall we move ahead to public comment at this point? We have closed to public comment, and how many speakers do we have?
We have 18 speakers.
We have 18 speakers. If the Board does not object, I would like to, normally we only allow 20 minutes of public comment, but I would allow, like to allow speakers to have two minutes of time, which will bring it up to roughly 36. And so if there's no objections, we'll move ahead in that direction. So speakers, we will limit your time to two minutes. Mr. Heron will call three names, so please go ahead and move to the front of the room when you're waiting in line for your turn. I do want to say at this point that we, I know that we all have received some very thoughtful letters, emails, and we have read them all. If you don't get a chance to say fully what you want to say, please do write to us, and we will read them and take everything into consideration. So with that, Mr. Heron.
Lanny Evenstein, followed by Diane Fugino, followed by Nick Tonkin.
Members of the Board, Dr. Sarvis, I'm here tonight to empathize with you to a certain extent. It's a very difficult decision that you have to make, and at the same time, I think it's important that you make the decision that's in the best interest of the largest number of students, and that is the thousands of students who are in the Santa Barbara Elementary School District and who reside in the Santa Barbara Elementary District and who have to be your top priority. And I think that the real question you have to ask yourself is, is to what extent it may it be worthwhile to phase in an implementation, and I think that's where you have to assess the testimony and consider the input that you've received. I think that there's a good argument that can be made for retaining upper grades or some upper grades with inter-district transfers, but I do believe that for the primary grades, you have to start an implementation program more quickly than not merely not allowing new enrollees into the district. So those are very general comments. The only more specific comment I would make is that I noticed in the estimate of 300, it's based upon enrollments this year. There happens to be a pretty small 4th grade class. I presume that's based upon some data, so that's a factor you may wish to consider. And then also, what this figure, I'm not sure if it includes, is that some of the continuing students will, would be moving out of the district that they were in and no longer attending because they're moving from Ventura to Las Vegas, or something along those lines. So it's something that I think these numbers would be a little bit lower in any event as a result of that factor. Thank you.
Thank you. Diane Fugino, followed by Nick Tonkin, followed by Jaime Suarez.
Yeah, I want to say that I recognize that these are really grave economic times and that this is a really difficult decision. And though inter-district transfers may seem like a mild decision, I just want to say as a parent of a child affected by this, it really is quite devastating to us as a family, to my child, and also to teachers who would potentially lose their jobs, and I think that these need to be considered. Jack O'Connell, in his recent State of Education address, said that education should be seen as an investment, right, not as an expense. And I also want to say that in this time of job losses and house losses, that I know families who can barely cope with this and can't even deal with this, and that schools need to be a stable place for our families. So I ask that, two things. One is, I ask that you seriously consider that this has a grave impact on families and a far-reaching impact on students and that we, and teachers, and that we try to minimize the impact. I've just seen how hard this is going to be, but if we could keep all K through six students and future siblings. Today in the LA Times, they had an article about this Beverly Hills School District going basic aid, and it sounds like they're trying to do this to keep the students who already have transfers. They're keeping children of school district employees and some other options, so I hope that you would seriously consider that. The second thing I wanted to ask is if you would consider postponing this and forming a committee that includes, of course, the school board and district employees, also Jack O'Connell, but as well as parents and teachers, because I do believe that those most directly affected by this won't be able to come up with the most creative solutions and alternatives that allow us to think expansively, and not just to think about economics, but to think beyond economics. And in terms of class size reduction.
15 seconds.
I've been hearing about class size reduction, and I just want to say that it, I mean, increasing, and I've heard that if we increase it to 30, we then lose a third of the teachers, which would be a much greater savings. So I think that these two options shouldn't be pitted against each other, and that we really should be thinking expansively.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Nick Tonkin. I'm a parent at Open Alternative School. I reside in the District of Santa Barbara. Before I say what I plan to say, let me just make one brief point regarding the commuting parents, and I heard a couple of things from your district staff that left me wondering whether they really get it. The families that I know that commute to our district are families, in some cases, whose children, who have themselves been born and raised in this town and driven out because they can't afford to live here. The granny that takes the kids after school lives here, while the mom and the dad are working at Cottage Hospital. It's unthinkable, inconceivable that they would have their child in school in Ventura. They sleep there, they spend eight hours a day there because of the economic realities in this town. They're part of our community. They're not Venturans, they're part of our community. So please bear in mind the human cost of what is being proposed to you here. And what is being proposed to you, in my mind, is quite wrong from the get-go. I don't believe that, as the man said, you should be taking an unusual route to achieve basic aid status. I don't think you should be seeking out eliminating children from our district as a source of savings. I think that's a wrong approach. And as parents, we feel that we've been presented with a false choice, a false dichotomy. We don't think there's a choice between increasing class sizes or eliminating 30% of the students in our school. Why do we have to choose between those two things? That's not a choice that we should be presented with. It's not a choice that you, as leaders of our community, as elected officials, should be topping your agenda with. We look to you for greater leadership. We look to you to seek out bigger solutions to the problem of our children not having enough funding. I look to you to work with LAFCO to see if we could annex Montecito Union and get the full property tax from, but you see, you laughed, Dr. Heron. This is what we expect from our elected leaders. The bureaucrats will come with these plans. Your job is not to do this. I need you to look at bigger solutions for our children.
Time is up. Thank you so much.
Is it Jaime?
Yes.
Jaime Suarez, followed by Arjun Sarkar and Kristi Grant. Arjun Sarkar.
Okay, I'm just coming to see also, you know, for the, I know that, you know, all of us, we're doing, you know, with the economy, you know, we're is beating hard for everybody's housing and everything. But I'm just coming because I have two sons, you know. I'm the mother of two students that attend Monroe School. They're nine and 11 years. They go to 4th and 5th grade. I live in the Goleta District, but the school, Goleta District, the school that my kids belong is Elwood. But the reason that I'm here is because my kids, they don't want to move to another school. They want to stay in Monroe because they like it, you know, they feel comfortable in the school. And also, it will be hard for me to move my kids to Elwood because all my work is near Monroe School. I work as a house cleaning, and most of my work is nearby. Right, right now, we only have one car for the family. Every day, my husband needs to drop us off at Monroe School in the morning, then he drives back to his work. We have to wait for him until he gets off from work at 3:30 and pick us up. We don't have any family that lives in Goleta or near Elwood School. Sometimes they call, they call me from Monroe to go and pick up my kids when they don't feel good, and for me, it's easy to go and pick them up because I only have to walk a couple blocks. But if my, but if I, but if my sons were moved to Elwood, it will be, it will take me like an hour to go, to pick them up in the bus.
30 seconds.
I came to this meeting to lay you the word of the supervises, if they give us a chance to the kids that are being in the Santa Barbara District more than three years or two years, you know, to stay, you know, in this school, you know, just that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sarkar, followed by Kristi Grant, followed by Kathy Nushal.
Thank you for letting me speak. I do live in the district, and I'm speaking tonight. Some of the comments have already been made, but I figured that I'll just stick with the comments that I'm going to make. I feel in this stage and age of commuting, that it's a significant factor in our local economy. Children should have the option to attend their local school district, i.e. Buellton or Ventura, or come to their parents and attend the school that their parents are working close to. Number two, I feel it should be a natural maticulation that takes the district into basic aid, not using a tool, i.e. inter-district transfers, as a way to fast-track basic aid numbers. Also, I feel that this flies in direct conflict with what Jack O'Connell said in his speech on this week. We will, quote, "We will see solidified a two-tiered system of education that will become unattainable." Unattainable in the sense that a student's future could be determined by a zip code rather than his or her individual determination to learn. The last thing tonight, I'm asking, as an operational action item that you have the power to do, Santa Barbara School District, to create a committee that could include Dr. Sarvis, board members, community members, a few other categories for members, to assist, to assess the options for this district regarding basic aid. I'm also making the recommendation that we invite Jack O'Connell to attend one of the committee meetings as soon as possible so that this district is in alignment with what the state is looking to accomplish. Basic aid does not support.
15 seconds.
Basic aid does not support the concept of equality.
Kristi Grant, followed by Kathy Nushal, followed by Virginia Bobrow.
Hi, thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak. I'm going to reiterate some things that other parents have said, but there are two things that I wanted to especially highlight. One, my children are in the GATE program at Washington, and there was an implication that all districts offer the same type of programs, and that's not true. I'm in the Goleta School District, and we don't have a program at all like the day-long GATE program that identifies special needs of certain children. Also, I feel like in the economic situation that we're in, there's just been an election, and there are lots of proposals and things coming up, and the president has made commitments to make education a priority, and that there is a lot of effort to make funding available and to change the course of the current economy, and I think this is a little bit premature in that we haven't gotten any of those final numbers. They're going to be coming out in the next few weeks, and I would ask that you wait and sort of evaluate what other options may be coming our way. And finally, I think if you just draw a straight number and make families choose between some of their children being able to stay in the programs and other children, like their siblings not being able to, that's an additional hardship on families.
Thank you very much. Kathy Nushal, followed by Virginia, followed by Laura Hill.
Hi, I don't have anything eloquent to say. I just wanted to ask that you seriously consider before getting rid of all the transfers. My daughter's been at the same school for almost four years. She is at Washington, she's absolutely loved it, she's very happy there. The idea that she's going to be kicked out has us all very upset, and I just want to ask, before you do anything, could you please just make sure that this is the only way that you, it's the way you have to go, because there's a lot of families that would be completely disrupted. So thank you very much, and I hope that it comes to the point where you don't have to get rid of all the inter-district transfers. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Virginia Bobrow, and this is the very first school board meeting I've ever attended in my life, so you, that tells me that this is something that's really important to me and to my school community, which is Open Alternative School. Open Alternative School is a unique school in that it does offer programs that schools in the Goleta School District do not offer. My home, my home school is Mountain View. Most people would think I'd be nuts to give up my spot at Mountain View, and I do, because of the programs that are at Open Alternative School that are not available in any Goleta School, in any of the Goleta Schools. And I have twins, and they've been at Open Alternative School. It's the only school they've ever attended. They're now in 5th grade. Clearly, it would be disruptive enough to make them switch to another school for one year before having to go on, perhaps even returning to Open Alternative School for 7th grade, because that's in the unified district. That is ridiculous. I think you could admit that that at least would be a ridiculous scenario, and force me to perhaps buy a home or rent a home in Santa Barbara for nine months just to have that address. Clearly, we're all having to make difficult decisions as individual human beings, as families, as communities, and for our nation as well, and sacrifices do need to be made. It seems fair that the sacrifices be made evenly amongst everyone who is in the schools. It seems fair to me that Goleta should have to pay towards my children being educated by the Santa Barbara School District, and it seems to me that there can be, and I know you've already made a proposal to them, and I'm just wondering if there are some, if more creative ways could be researched to do swaps, you know, to just even find one-on-one swaps so that no money has to be paid back and forth, but you just do mutual swaps. So again, reiterate what a lot of the speakers have said, that this seems premature, forced, and unfair, and that taking some time to see what else changes in our community and federally would be the wise choice. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much. Laura Hill.
Renee.
Renee. Renee, followed by Bob Faulkner, followed by Heather Winogren.
Uh, Dr. Sarvis and members of the board, I don't envy your position at all this evening. I know that this is terribly difficult for, for all of you, just as it is difficult for us. Um, one thing that I wanted to point out is that when my family and I moved to Santa Barbara, um, actually, when we moved to Galita, I am a Galita resident. My children go to Open Alternative School. Um, we were stunned and thrilled and delighted with the Santa Barbara and the surrounding municipalities, and how they've had a long and symbiotic relationship creating a seamless urban and suburban environment for us to live in. This relationship has extended to school choice and schools of choice. Both districts recognize that there is not a one-size-fit-all model for schools and teachers and students and the relationships between them. We, as a parent at OAS, um, the longest-standing school of choice, we respectfully ask you to uphold your commitment to choice, a very democratic, um, position, and that you allow us to continue to do what's the very best for our children because, uh, that's what we've always done so far. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Faulkner, followed by Heather Winogren, followed by Karla Kuklinski.
Hi, I'm a parent of a child at Open Alternative School. We live in the Santa Barbara School District. Uh, and I think there are, I'm just speaking for our school, okay? I think our school's really special. We have things that we don't have in other schools, such as theater arts programs, our organic garden, where we can teach environmental education. Uh, we have core groups, people talk about their concerns. This doesn't happen in other schools. I also am told that our school is very small, that the school district tells us that. Uh, we have about two-hundred students right now. And this past Monday, I heard in an email that if this basic aid program goes through and inter-district transfers are cut, that we'd lose about thirty percent of our students, which would make us an even smaller school. So, it seems like a kind of oxymoron-type of thing. We're too small already because we're told that, that our lunch programs cost too much, and that we cost too much for the district and all. And yet, the prop, what's being proposed is to make us even smaller. And I don't really understand that. So, I wish that we could keep all of our students. And Galita is part of our family. Montecito's part of our family. Everyone, I don't think that we can make up that thirty percent from just Santa Barbara people coming to our school.
Thank you. Ms. Winogren, Karla Kuklinski.
Hi, my name is...
Eric Peterson.
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, my name is Heather Winogren. I'm another parent from OAS, as you've seen many of our, our audience here. Um, OAS is a school of choice. It's been providing choice to the whole community for a very long time. When I drive from Galita to OAS, I am choosing an alternative education for my son. I am choosing a community that not only supports the arts and sciences, but is comprised of artists, scientists, and educators, people who bring their talents to every aspect of school life. When I choose OAS, I'm choosing a school that provides my child an unparalleled education in environmental studies. He plants food in a garden that bears fruit that then he, he then eats in his lunch. I deeply resonate with the values and educational philosophy of Open Alternative School, and a ban on inter-district transfers takes this school away from my family. Galita doesn't offer a school that meets our needs, as you've heard before. My family, my community is Open Alternative School. Um, becoming a basic aid district has many benefits. It cannot be denied. Um, but I'm, I just wonder, does this transition have to happen at the cost of banning inter-district transfers? Um, is there not some other way to achieve this goal? Some other way that we can meet goals without ripping our communities apart? Um, maybe waiting until the numbers naturally fall into the required levels? I don't understand it. I know smart people, you guys do. Um, I stand before you today, representing all of the children.
Fifteen seconds.
All of the children who will suffer in this region, and I ask you to consider at what cost. The cost is choice. By sacrificing inter-district transfers for funding, you are denying choice. And given the amount of suffering that families will experience across all of our districts, I say that cost is too high.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Karla Kuklinski, followed by Eric Peterson, Peterson, followed by Nancy Black.
Hello. I'm here to follow up in person on an email that I sent the board, the superintendent, earlier today. And I appreciate those of you, those of you who replied to me already. Um, my main, uh, concern is about, as a parent of, uh, Gate students in the Washington Gate program. And it, as was replied back to me by some of your emails, and I've heard tonight, um, that there's some belief that we can meet our children's special needs at other schools. And I just wanna echo what another parent has said tonight, which is, I don't believe that's the case. The Washington Gate program is the only full-time Gate program that there is in the entire county. And it serves a special need, and the special, these special needs of these children have been, have already been identified. And I believe that the children would be very poorly served if they were sent, uh, out of the program because they're out of district. Um, I also just wanna make the point, uh, our principal was supposed to get the actual numbers to you, but I believe that right now, the Gate uh, numbers are just eight out-of-district, uh, children in the program. So, it's a very small number, and it would have a very great impact on them if, if they were allowed to stay in the program. So, I appreciate your time and your consideration for this.
Thank you. Eric Peterson, followed by Nancy Black, followed by, uh, Mr. McDermott.
Hello, I'm Eric Peterson, and, um, my children are not transfer students. We live in the district. Um, I'm concerned tonight about constitutional issues and equality. I'm gonna read a couple of excerpts from the State of California Constitution. I'm gonna try to go really fast, so, uh, hopefully you can keep up. "A person may not be deprived of life, liberty, or property without due process of law or denial, equal protection of the laws," going on. "In amending this subdivision, the legislature and the people of the state of California find and declare that this amendment is necessary to serve compelling public interests, including those of making the most effective use of the limited financial resources now and prospectively available to support public education, maximizing the educational opportunities, and protecting the health and safety of all public pupils, enhancing the ability of parents to participate in the educational process, preserving harmony and tranquility in this state and its public schools, preventing the waste of scarce food or fuel resources, and protecting the environment." And it goes on. "A citizen or class of citizens may not be granted privileges or immunities not granted on the same terms to all citizens." In essence, by, by us becoming a basic aid district...
Thirty seconds.
We are achieving greater gains than other people in the state of California. Members of the board, it is not right or moral that we gain privilege simply due to our geographic location or size reduction. At minimum, let basic aid happen naturally through attrition so as not to be responsible for making the decision which leads to granting of unconstitutional privileges to an elite group. Thank you. Take your time and make a good decision.
Thank you. Nancy Black, Mr. McDermott, followed by Kate Smith.
Hi, my name is Nancy Black. I'm a journalist, and my kids go to Open Alternative School. I'm in the district, where a third of the student population would be excluded from attendance if transfers from Galita, Hope, and Montecito districts were no longer allowed. Our school is like a family. This would affect one out of every three of our children. Based on the two thousand and six numbers, OAS has the highest number of inter-district transfers in Santa Barbara School District. This may have to do with the fact that we're a school of choice. Adams has the next highest number. I'd like to request that if basic aid be adopted, that the serious impact of these children's lives in our communities be mitigated by allowing current children and siblings to remain enrolled. I understand the difficult position in which the board finds itself with this issue. Either way, there's a human cost. I appreciate Dr. Jarvis's communications with the neighboring districts, and propose that we deeply continue his investigation to form a regional cooperation. Perhaps there could be some manner of student swapping or other solutions. Also, in the recent article by the LA Times on the Beverly Hills District, it was mentioned that proposed legislation could allow Beverly Hills to declare itself a district of choice for the entire district. This designation would mean that it could still retain some state attendance funds for non-district students. Perhaps this could affect us as well. The Santa Barbara School District has a long history of supporting parental choice. The second dis, the secondary district is one big district and doesn't face the same challenge. Are there any possibilities, given the scope and impact of this decision, for broadening the district itself or forming regional partnerships with neighboring districts?
Twenty-five seconds.
I want you to know that you can count on us, parents of OAS, and probably all the parents, for creative partnership to solve this problem, to stand for the possibility that our economic difficulties be managed, not at the expense of our children and families, but with creativity, partnership, and regional cooperation. Thank you.
Bernadette McDermott, followed by Kate Smith, followed by Antonio DiLoreto.
Um, thank you for your time. My name is Bernadette McDermott, and I'm a parent at Open Alternative School. Um, I'm a nurse at Cottage, um, downtown, and I live in Galita. Uh, my husband and I found ourselves very fortunate to be able to buy a house in a cul-de-sac in Galita that opened to a school called El Rancho. Well, six months before our daughter was to go to kindergarten, El Rancho was closed down. After many, many nights standing in front of the Galita School Board, um, we felt we needed to move to a better school. We went to a school, and for three years, it did not suit our child, and we finally left. She didn't bloom there. We then went to Open Alternative. Open Alternative has been, has given us the happiest year and a half of our lives. And I cannot see why moving the children out of this district is going to make it better. It's only going to make it worse for everyone in the end. Uh... My child has bloomed at Open Alternative School. We are happy there. We, she's enjoying learning, and we so appreciate the values the community has to offer. Open Alternative offers and gives a philosophy that no other school has to offer. There is no other school that has to offer. We have searched. We have really tried. We did not have a school in our cul-de-sac to go to. It was closed. So, if we move now, this will be the third time for my daughter to have to go to a school, and she's only ten years of age. Um, I ask, where are the rights of the child in all of this?
Fifteen seconds.
I ask, where are the rights of the child in all of this? The children will have to make the sacrifice. We owe them more security. I ask you to please, please remember to children and try to make the right decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Kate Smith, followed by Antonio DiLoreto, followed by Jill Davison.
I only have two minutes, and my remarks will be merely just the topics. Each topic is unique. And actually, uh, since the district can no longer email me because their web server does not reach earthlink.net, I have had to out myself. I am a journalist. I am in books, in book jackets. I've been in movies. And I am now adopting the name that I've used as a pen name for thirty years. I'm revealing that I am Kate Longstory. So, with that last name, I'm just going to mention my topics. One, Lanny Ebenstein, who is not a parent because he's never been married or had children, came to this meeting to say, "We should have basic aid, ruin people's lives," and then he left. He is my neighbor, and I will put on my websites just how he has been illegal and unethical, and I resent his appearance here. Two, Diana Rigby and Sharon Watt came to Gwen Phillips, the founder of Open Alternative School, and they said, "Gwen, if Kate Smith wins, her lawsuit..."
Kate, please be on topic. Not about your lawsuit, about...
Thank you. I am talking about it. That was a breach of my rights. You interrupted me, and I have to have the time given back.
No.
She would lose her school if I won, and it's now coming to fruition. She was asked to do an MOU, and I told her, "Gwen, what is coming is the destruction of your school. I will put, I think that they should en charter, and I will help them do it. You en charter OAS. I ran because OAS is the school of our dreams and the school of our nation." And I will tell you...
Thank you, Mrs. Smith.
...that the boundary line dispute, I am not in this district according to...
You're out of order.
Okay.
Antonio DiLoreto, followed by Jill Davison.
Thank you for letting me speak. Uh, I'm another Galita resident that chooses to go to OAS. And, um, did, did we all realize OAS wasn't in Santa Barbara School District boundaries? Uh, it's, it's in the Hope District, and I wanna make sure we know that. So, what that means is that, uh, our neighbors that live next door, and I was looking at a house to buy, uh, next door, we wouldn't be able to go because we, we're not in that, uh, we're not in the school district, although we'd be a neighbor, we'd be neighbors to the school. Um, so, we're a school of choice. And I think that's the, um, the inter-district transfers, uh, is the single best way to keep our mission statement right up here alive. Um, it, it, it matters so much to our families and our involvement, and it's, it's, it increases the value so much. Um, and likewise, with you, closing the transfers is like locking down all of us in our tiny little community. And, um, and we need a, and choice has gotta be the, the solution for these times. Um, I'd like to suggest a third alternate to your, alternate, your alternatives for above, and if you could add a, uh, number three, uh, to add schools of choice, and that means schools that aren't dwelling inside their district that they're governed by. Uh, that would be, maybe we could also add that to our, um, alternatives of the recommendations. Um, thank you so much. This is a great opportunity for us all to show our values. Uh, something we could, it's a wonderful time to be on the board.
Hi, good evening. My name is Jill Davison. I have a, I live in Galita. I have a kindergartner who started at Monroe Elementary School five weeks ago. Um, we attended, uh, one school in, in Galita, and my child was having, um, respiratory allergy issues with a site. So, by doctor's orders, I had to leave that school. Um, we went to our second school, and it was not meeting my child's needs. He has a processing disorder, which, um, doesn't give him a whole lot of trouble in life, but if the situation isn't set up pretty reasonably, he has trouble. And he started to spiral downhill at that school. So, this little guy, five and a half years old, is now in his third school for the year. And if, uh, so he's now at Monroe in Santa Barbara. If I have to transfer him a fourth time, I swear it will put my kid over the edge. I really need him to stay. Um, I am a single parent, and I think the one issue that has not come up tonight is that parents who have their kids transferred are the most motivated parents in the world to find the right education for their child. And what I have bought, brought to Monroe in my five weeks so far, which to me seems like nothing because we're just starting there, is a, I'm a PTA member. I'm on their Public Relations Committee. I've attended two field trips. I've assisted in the classroom. I am working on their most major fundraiser of the year. I have worked out a science arrangement with Santa Barbara City College's Biology Department to bring all the resources that Santa Barbara City College has for their college students...
Fifteen seconds.
...into the classroom at Monroe Elementary School. And we are starting that program this week. Um, my training is as a wildlife biologist, and, and I have been an educator. And I just wanted to really emphasize that inter-district transfer parents are the most motivated people and bring a lot to the classroom. I do not think that their contributions should be overlooked, and I think that the level of their contributions economically and time-wise in the classroom...
Thank you.
...are incredibly important. -are incredibly important, and please consider that in your decision.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all so much for your comments. Board members, any questions for staff or comments that you'd like to share? Mrs. Deacon?
I have a lot to say, so I'll try to keep this brief because I know we all want to say things. I want to address a couple of things that people have mentioned before I make some general comments. I know there's the feeling that we're moving too fast, that, and I just want you to know that the urgency here is directly related to teacher layoffs. We have to let teachers know in March, and so how many teachers are laid off really is driving the urgency here. People have also mentioned the idea about federal money, and believe me, we're really looking for federal money, but the reality is, is that the federal money that will come to us is pretty much categorical money. That means it's for things like special ed, Title I. It's not for the general fund, and so it's not going to help us in terms of, of teacher layoffs. I also just want to say how incredibly sorry I am that because of the state's financial mess, that we're really faced with pitting the welfare of one set of students against another, but, but that's really what the numbers are telling us. And philosophically, I think the fact that there are wealthy districts that get as much as $22,000 per student as compared to the rest of the state that gets maybe $5,000 or $6,000 per student is inherently unfair. That's not a system that we can fix right now. We have to think about the children of our district. So I know that, that for those of you out there whose children are going to be affected or could be affected, that this is really, really disruptive. I know that you picked our schools because you thought they were good schools, because you, and you made sacrifices, in some cases, to be here. You're dedicated, you're volunteers, you're fundraisers, and if we lose you, others, other schools we'll certainly gain. Having said that, I'm really mindful that as a board, we do have fiduciary responsibility to the residents of our district. And if we move to basic aid, again, it looks like the majority of the students in our district will benefit because if we have to cut teachers, we'll probably cut less if we close down inter-district transfers than if we don't, and then we have to, to increase class sizes. And so I know people believe that's a false dichotomy, but I really don't think that's true. I wish we had some good alternatives, and I'd like to offer up a few to the board to discuss. I think we should definitely try to keep the students of our district employees. I think we should look at grandfathering in current fifth graders and their siblings, at least for one year. We might want to look at the possibility of students who travel long distances to, to move into our charter so that at least they can stay in Santa Barbara where their parents Galita Family School in Galita, I think, is similar in philosophy to Open Alternative. I see you shaking your head.
It's not the same thing.
Okay, all right. Well, anyway, that's pretty much what I wanted to say for now, and I may have some questions later. Thank you.
All right, Mrs. Cordero.
Well, I also just have a few general comments, and then maybe as we move to discussing the specific alternatives, my comments will be more, more pointed. But first, I wanted to say that I absolutely agree with what Ms. Deacon just, the comments that Ms. Deacon just shared, and so I won't repeat them all, but I think we are in a really difficult position that is somewhat unprecedented in terms of where we are with the budget and the fact that we are being faced with decisions that have to be made fairly quickly in the absence of a firm budget. So we're still, we're making, it still, it feels like we're making decisions in the dark, and we have to do it because to not do it puts the whole district at risk. And so that's a really difficult position to be in, and I think it's a really difficult position to, to try to be able to understand because unless you've really sort of studied school finance, which every, we all recognize, school finance is probably one of the most complicated things there is in terms of how, I mean, even people from other, you know, from the business world are, you know, surprised at how complex the finances are for school issues. But one of the things that I would hope that those of you who were here tonight and maybe other people that you know would do is to maybe go to your, to the boards in your home districts and lobby your school boards to make some decisions that would perhaps be more compatible with, with having a partnership with us because, as Dr. Sarvas pointed out, we, Dr. Sarvas was very proactive in trying to reach agreements with other school districts, and they have not really been very amenable to that. So it would be really helpful, for example, we're surrounded by, pretty much surrounded by basic aid school districts who do not allow inter-district transfers. So our students from our district cannot go to other school districts, which creates a difficulty for us. And some of those school districts are, are much wealthier than we are. So we're in a position of, of having to support their students when they're not willing to support ours, and they have a great deal more money than we do. So it's a very, very complex problem, and I can't, I can't project how we're going to resolve this, but I would hope that many of you would take your concerns and your passions to your home schools and your home districts and try to encourage them to adopt some more supportive policies as well.
Thank you, Mrs. Cordero. Any other comments? Dr. Noel.
Thank you, Madam President. I have a number of concerns, and one of the speakers brought up something that I hadn't thought about. The, we have two schools, and I don't have the numbers in front of me for Santa Barbara Community Academy. How many of the transfers?
I think it's between 20 and 30, as I recall.
Okay. There are two, those are, we have two rather unique, small schools. OAS and Santa Barbara Community Academy. Each is, has a unique philosophy, a pedigree that goes with it, a way of organizing schools. They gave it to me. All right, thank you. And, and the thought that they, that they will, in some sense, go subcritical, a subcritical mass is a matter of concern to me. And, and so it makes me want to hear some more creative thinking about ways in which we can ensure the continued, not just existence, but viability educationally and the flourishing of those, of both of those schools. That's one concern. I don't, I don't know where that goes, but it's, it's where I start, that's for sure. One thing that's, that I miss in this whole conversation has to do with, about, with the money. First is a question to Ms. Jete. These numbers on the chart, do they reflect the savings by faculty reductions, FTE reductions? So, so to get the whole picture of what gets saved, we need to have that added?
That's correct.
That would be very helpful so we can get that broad picture. Then the next question I have about money is, how does this play into the single district status, resolution status that we have, Mr., Mr. Smith? This is, this is the elementary district we're talking about, and yet the district, the two districts are one district for all purposes, if I recall reading that part of the code, except property ownership.
Yeah, the, the issue would be primarily, it would have no difference for personnel functions and as far as the reporting function. What it means is that we would calculate the revenue limit in the secondary district, and then basically we'd be basic aid in the elementary district. So you would just not see a revenue limit calculation in the elementary district, and you would just receive property taxes.
But we, but there would be-
You would still combined report.
Of course, the secondary district gets more per student, but the, the ratio of elementary to secondary would change then because we'd be getting more per student at the elementary district?
It could change based on, let's look at joint-funded positions. Usually, we use a 70, 30 percent, a 70, 30 percent split, and we've used that on the basis of the ADA, proportional ADA in the past. Now, whether that would force us to look at some other means of division for jointly-funded positions, that would be certainly something that we could consider.
Well, I guess, I guess what I would like to understand better is how, if this were to go forward, we could, we and the public could be assured that, that it's not subsidizing the high school district. The, and the last point I have is just something, it comes up for me from time to time. When asked to make difficult decisions that are going to call for a great deal of sacrifice to get money, I'd like to know what the money's going to be used for. And I, I could not certainly defend to my constituency a decision that produced funds that would go to increasing administrative salaries, for example.
Yeah, I, I-
Or I could, I could, that, that's an easy one, okay?
Right.
I can, because you're all administrators, I don't mean, not all, from there down. I don't mean to offend you. I'll pick another example, okay?
Yeah, but, but I think you hit the, the nail on the head at the beginning. The transition to basic aid in the scenario is also, the corollary is that you have to shed the expense to get there. So really, what we're talking about is positioning yourself for the future. The transition has an accompanied, you know, shedding of expense to get there. And when we're talking about, let's take, you know, the scenario where all inner districts went back, you're going to lose the associated teachers with those students, and so that's the expense that you get rid of. What it means about going into basic aid in the future is that you get to retain those property taxes above and beyond the revenue limit entitlement. So there's really, I see, they're kind of two different issues there.
They're related.
I can't say, I can't say in 10 or 20 years what some future board might decide to use basic aid proceeds on.
The related question is teacher salaries. While it might enable us to, at some point, give teachers raises in the elementary district, we're all on one, the teachers are all on one contract.
Right.
So that would not then be possible for, that would not, it wouldn't be possible.
Well, right-
Or if it were possible, then you'd have to find some way to fund the commensurate raise for the teachers in the high school district.
Well, remember, right now, you have two separate and distinct revenue limits between the elementary and secondary district, and you're blending both of those, and you're funding teachers' raises on a uniform salary schedule. So I don't see that as being any different. That's the, that's the status quo. That's the situation that currently exists.
Let me add to that. For years, we've had the secondary district in the stronger financial position. In fact, it's the secondary district that carries most of our reserve. It's quite unlikely that the elementary district would assume that role, although perhaps the fourth year out, you know, maybe the elementary would be in a stronger financial position, third year out, fourth year out. Well, our projections have the secondary district going into basic aid at about that point in time as well, and I, I don't see that scenario happening. In fact, since the secondary district has been in a stronger financial position, I know the district has maintained, and our teachers' association has maintained, that teachers will be compensated on an equitable basis regardless of which district they're teaching in. And I could not imagine that, that we would turn our backs on, or that the teachers' association would turn their backs on that longstanding agreement.
Well, these are issues that I would like to, I'm glad that you're answering the questions. They're all thoughts that entered my mind. I just have one last question, really. On the, on the forms that parents fill out to transfer, is there a caveat in there about no guarantees for the future? Are they on notice from, from the-
What it says on the back of the form is there, there's terms and conditions, and there's certain things like behavior, attendance, and all, but it always says that this is a yearly contract application, and there's always the, I think it says for capacity or space is one of the conditions, but it does say there are conditions.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
It doesn't list going into basic aid or anything like that, but yes.
Mr. Heron, do you have any comments?
This is a hard one for me. I'll just start off right up front because I ran on a basis of sound fiscal practices. I'm a businessman, and my platform from day one was to treat this like a business. Having said that, because if that was the case, that'd be an easy decision. I also wanted consistency. I also wanted dependability. I also wanted trustworthiness. I also wanted integrity. That's a hard balance between those two things. I have some questions similar to the others, but some preface. I don't want to see district employees or teachers be involved with this.
I'm sorry, can you clarify what you mean by be involved with us?
If teachers, if teachers have a sibling or have a child, I don't want to jeopardize the teacher in our system. If a district employee has a child, I don't want to jeopardize that. That's already in the hierarchy of needs. They already have preference over inter-district. So they already have that privilege, and I don't think I want to see that. I don't want to see families broken up. I don't want to see one child left some, left with our district and the other have to leave because of some arbitrary decision. So those are some parameters I'm looking at. And then tied to that, I'm not sure that strictly by grade level is the way to make a cut. We don't, we don't cut teachers that way. When we send out notices, we're going to send notices out to the teachers who have been with us the least length of time. I'd almost wish there was a way to take the 300 students that are involved and rank them by family activity. How long has a family been involved in the school? We have situations where we have children who are, and families who have been with the school for seven years or six years, and so now they're going into the seventh grade, but they have a second grader coming up. Well, take that versus somebody who joined us this year in the, in the fourth grade or fifth grade or whatever it is. I would wish there was way, that it wasn't strictly by class, and just look at a different alternative. I don't know, I don't know which one I would choose, but I think there's other ways than just arbitrarily by class because families, they buy into our schools. They are the heart and soul of our schools in many cases, as I think a couple of the speakers said. They're not different than other parents in many ways. All parents are the heart and soul. But after you've been invested in a school for five, six, seven, eight years, and you've donated money, and you've participated, and you've been at PTA, and you've been involved in everything, you have a little bit more buy-in, just like a teacher has more buy-in when they get tenure. So I'd be looking at those kinds of things. So I'd like to know how many, specifically, teachers we have with children, how many, how many sets of, how many families are involved versus how many children are involved. Is there a mechanism for hardships? And Dr. Sarvas says there is. So I'd like to know a little bit more about, you know, what would qualify as a hardship. And there's many, every one of you who sent me a letter has a hardship, but there must be some way to categorize those. Mr. Peterson talked about the constitution issue, but I don't think he pinpointed what's on my mind is, when I was at a session at Montecito Union during the campaign, the incumbent who lost, maybe this is why, he, he was very vocal that basic aid was going to go away, that it's inequitable, it's unconstitutional, it's unequal education. Why should Montecito have $20,000 a student, and we have, you know, a quarter of that? And so what if basic aid goes away, and we've lost 300 students? Where do we stand?
Do you understand what we're saying?
I, I'd like to know by-
Depending on legislation.
By my, by my numbers, I'd like to know what's going to happen to Adam School if they lose 70 students, or OAS if they lose 64, or Monroe if they lose 45. And then I guess my, my last comment is, yes, the form probably says, Dr. Noel- And then I guess my, my last comment is, yes, the form probably says, Dr. Noel, it's a one-year contract. I guess one of my questions, how many have we ever turned away? How many have we ever said, "Sorry, the one year is up"? I don't know. Maybe we have. I have no, I don't have the history. But have we ever said to a parent, "You can't come back"? I understand from principals, it's, and I'll use my school as an example, two schools, once a Don, always a Don, once a Panther, always a Panther. Neither one of those schools are involved in this, so I can use those two. How many principals have told you, "Once a, always"? What have our principals said by their words, actions, and deeds to get you to stay at the school, or keep your children at the school? I don't know the answer to that, but those are the kinds of things I would like to know.
Thank you. I can chime in on the last one. I'm sure Ms. Sawasdee could too, is unfortunately, we every year do send away inter-districts and inter-districts, usually because of space issues. And I, I think that's something that we, whatever the discussion ends up being, that we need to make that clear also, that we may say X grade level has the permission to stay, you know, that will allow those renewals, but it does not mean that there will actually be space at an individual school site. That is always based on site capacity, so it will only be a very general thing. I have a quick question. Homeschool Santa Barbara, the numbers have not been broken out for inter-district transfers yet? Maybe Ms. Sawasdee can answer?
I believe there were like three, two, two-
There were two, there were two that we know of.
Two that we know of.
So there are only two inter-district transfers?
Yes. The, the large number of school, as you recall, and I won't go into detail here, we were trying to capture students who were not in our schools, not to have them shift from our schools.
Right.
The bulk of those students were in other homeschooling situations.
But they are within district.
They're within our district.
Okay, so that was just a bit of miscommunication originally. Thank you.
You may also want to ask about number of employees, children-
Yes.
And number of siblings, and this is directly off the form, and Meg, I believe you have those in your head.
Yes, we have fifteen district employees and five siblings. That we know of, because sometimes when those people filled out the form, they just say continuing. So we didn't know if they're continuing, and they have other people continuing, you know.
And little sibling.
Okay. Yeah, all right, and, and next time Ms. Jete will use the mic, sorry. And Mr. Heron?
Yeah, I, I just have to know what those hundred and fourteen are. We have a hundred and fourteen continuing. I think it's incumbent upon us to know what the reason is. So I would ask that that be researched.
Thank you. Dr. Noel, then I'll change.
I simply wanted to ask if there's not, some way in which we can hear more than just a casual answer from, by parents, but from the, the leaders at OAS, at the Santa Barbara Community Academy, and I would add the gate program, there's three programs that could go subcritical, and I'd like to understand better their perceptions of, of those possibilities and, and the implications for them.
And I'm sure that Dr. Sarvis would be happy to look into that. I'm a little concerned about that, because I got emails and phone calls from parents all over the district. I, I happen to be an Adams parent, which has a high number of transfers, and so I personally know these families, and I know how much every student cares about his or her school. And so I think we would be moving in the wrong direction to try to make special exceptions for certain programs or schools when these students are just as bonded to Adams, or Monroe, or Franklin, as they are to an OAS or Community Academy. Having said that, I also want to be clear that we are in no way talking about things going subcritical. I, I know that these programs are all very important to us and would continue, although they may be in slightly different forms. So I don't want anybody to worry about that.
Well, I, I-
Yes, Dr. Noel, you want to continue?
I don't understand that last sentence.
I don't want anybody to worry that, for example, that if, if OAS were to lose fifty students, that, that would mean that it's not a viable program. So I want to be really careful when you say subcritical, that you're-
Right.
Yeah. Yeah. I hear you.
Yeah, I, I don't understand how, I mean, you're, you're sure it won't be, and I'm, and I'm just asking a question. I don't know, you may have a better day than I.
Yeah.
I, I don't know the impact on those schools.
Right, and certainly-
I'm asking to learn the impact.
Um-
Because they, they bring something to our district that is programmatic in nature.
Absolutely, they do. The other issue that Dr. Noel had brought up was, how is this money going to be spent? And I think we have things coming up, very unfortunate budget scenario coming up that's going to hit us very hard in April, and I don't think it's a question of, we'll, we'll make this, and then we'll, we'll come up with some new spending plan and frittered away on anything. It would definitely be to save teachers and programs and services for our students that otherwise would go away. I did, I think that we all learned a lot from watching the Hope School District go through this process last year. It was a very painful process, and part of the issue there was that it actually kind of dragged on over two years. And I, I am not interested. I think it's cruel to put families through an extended process, and I don't think that that's a direction that we should go in. Like other board members have expressed, I do think that district employees absolutely should have the right for their students to stay. Beyond that, I think that we may need a little bit more information about what we can balance. I, I certainly, again, absolutely believe that next year's sixth graders and their younger siblings should be able to stay. I really like the idea of, of seeing if any of our surrounding districts would be willing to work out some sort of limited swap. And I hope that they will be amenable to working with that. And Mrs. Cordero, absolutely, I, I very much appreciate your point that students should go to their home district boards, and really write to them, and speak to them, and ask that this be something that they consider working with us on. We obviously are not taking a vote on this tonight. It will come back to us. My preference would be for it to come back at our next meeting, so that any decision that we make is something that parents can make arrangements for, if they have to make some changes for next year. Dr. Noel?
What is the timeline for voting on this?
We, in two weeks, at our next meeting.
So you're saying, the next meeting will be when?
February twenty-fourth, sorry.
And that would be the night, that, that would be when this would be voted on?
Yeah.
So, yeah, I think the public should understand that.
Yes, absolutely. Any other comments or questions? And Dr. Sarvis, was there anything that you wanted to follow up on?
Well, I just wanted to make sure that I had clear direction from the board. I understand that you want information on adding the cost of savings, including cuts. You do want information on the notion of being viable or, or critical, and I believe that that's economic as well as programmatic. Am I right?
Yeah, I, I just, for me, it's, it's, it's those things, and it's the gestalt, as perceived by the leaders of those schools.
Okay.
I'd like to hear their input.
The reason for continuing, I'm, I'm not quite clear about that. Is the board asking that we go to all of our transfer parents and ask them why they're continuing? I'm-
This was Mr. Heron.
I just want to be sure that I know.
They, they fill out a survey when they sign their forms, so I don't know if you, yes, do you want the district to call those hundred and fourteen?
At this point, I just, if there are assemblies in there, or if there are teachers or staff people that are continuing, and we-
Oh, but are, are children of employees or are siblings?
Yes. How many of those are in that category? Because we just heard there's fifteen and five siblings. I, I guess I question the five siblings, but maybe-
Well, we can quite easily just go back to the school and verify that. I mean, the school can give us that information.
Yeah, I'd just like to know for sure how many, because it looks like we're going to be looking to, to cut some number of people. And from all to a few, but I'd like to carve out some of those categories, so then we know what we'd still need to cut out from some other source.
Mrs. Cordero?
Well, I'm, I would like to see the figures for, and it's a little tiny bit different than what we have here. The figures for if we kept current fourth and fifth graders and their siblings, and if we kept just the current fifth graders and their siblings, those are the two fig- because what, what we, the chart we have here doesn't include siblings, and I know that might be a very small number, but I'd, I'd rather see that amount.
Just to be sure, okay.
Oh, excuse me.
Yes.
And, and employees, yeah.
Good, thank you.
Mrs. Deacon?
I just have one question for Mr. Smith. I know you don't have a crystal ball, but we're all thinking about these cuts that are looming that we might have to make based on the state cuts. Could you elaborate?
Yeah, I, I think the issue is, is that, you know, our first milestone in the development of our budget is the governor's proposal in January, which we actually received in December this year. And as you know, because of the compounding situation at the state level, they're talking about an eighteen-month budget timeframe. So basically, the adopted budget, whenever it happens, if it happens this week, would cover an eighteen-month time period. Well, since the state's budget is forty-one point six billion dollars out of balance over that eighteen-month timeframe, the only way to basically bring it into balance is basically to make, make both mid-year cuts and also cuts into the nine, ten fiscal year. Well, obviously, those cuts have affected all levels of government, including school districts, and the governor's proposal for K-12 education is that we would take significant mid-year cuts, roughly four point one million dollars between the districts in this year, which would be ongoing, and an additional two million dollars in nine, ten. So we're looking at a loss of six million dollars worth of revenue between this year and next year, and that would be ongoing. Now, I think what's important with regard to this discussion is the proposed cuts are to the revenue limit, and as we saw from Ms. Jete's graphs, that's significant relative to how it decreases state aid in relationship to our increasing property tax values. However, in the event the cuts came down on the restricted side, which we have no proposal out there that's viable, but let's say in the next couple of days, the cuts all came down on categoricals, we wouldn't have that relationship, and we would not be driven into basic aid. So I just want to show you how volatile and dynamic this situation is, although I think we will have some certainty relative to how the cuts manifest themselves probably this week. And so obviously, we would have that certainty relative, you know, before next, the next board meeting and the discussion on this issue.
You may have just jinxed the state budget, but thank you.
Well, I mean, the flip side of that would be, in the event that the cuts did not happen on the unrestricted side, we would not have to make those type of cuts programmatically that would be as difficult. So that would be the silver lining.
Mr. Heron?
Yeah, if, when you come back to us in two weeks, let's just hypothetically say we're going to have an extra million, we're going to have to make a million dollars less cuts. In that, in other words, if we take a step that, that gives us a million dollars that we don't have to cut from someplace, some idea of where we're going to, what, what, where that million dollar will be used. What, what will the benefit to our kids be for that million dollars? You know, and, and, and as, as Bob said, you know, administrative salaries doesn't do it, but, but, but what will it be used, what, in your best guesstimate, what would that save us? I'm sure class size would be one.
Well, I, I, I think there's two things, and we haven't had a full-blown discussion relative to this, but obviously, six million dollars, we cannot swallow in one fiscal year. And so our strategy will be able, will probably to be, to identify some level, what's called X of expenditure reductions and/or revenue enhancements, and burn down part of our reserve, hoping that through a variety of one-time mechanisms, and Dr. Sarvis alluded to them, you know, the spending freeze, sweeping categorical monies, if we get authorization to basically hopefully shore up those reserves that we burned down, so we have this delicate balancing act of, how much do we cut to decrease our ongoing structural deficit? How much do we consciously burn down our reserve with hopefully being able to not totally burn it down, because we've propped it up through these variety of mechanisms? So I guess what I'm saying is, I really can't answer your question, because I don't think it comes into the discussion, because the problem, or the, the magnitude of the problem is so enormous, we're looking at kind of a multifaceted approach to dealing with this crisis, which we think is going to be anywhere from a twenty-four to thirty-six month crisis.
Well, but-
I, I hate to be so jolly.
No mistake about it, we're, we're looking at major cuts this spring.
Yes, Mrs. Cordero?
Well, I just want to remind my colleagues, because I get a little nervous when, when the board starts asking the staff what the money is going to be used for. We make the decision of where the money goes. So if we decide that we are going to do this in order to save, to save a certain amount of money for the district, it's going to be incumbent upon us to, to then make the decisions that use it wisely. It's not the staff who's going to make those decisions. So I think we can ask staff, and I certainly would like, to have lists of possible items that are likely to be on the chopping block, but I want us to keep in mind, and certainly the public has a right to, to hold us accountable, that we're the ones who make the cuts, and we're the ones who make, who spend the money. And so we're asking staff for information, but we're going to have to make the bottom line decisions.
Right.
Yeah, and, and I think that, you know, obviously, we talked about, just getting to basic aid doesn't save you any money unless you shed the associated expense, you know, under the one scenario. And obviously, what we're talking about is, any revenue you generate here just offsets the level of cuts. I mean, we're not by any means in any kind of growth mode here, where we're adding program or anything else. This is, we're talking about severe fiscal austerity.
Thank you. And I just want to chime in also on something that, that Mr. Heron raised, and I completely agree that sometimes it doesn't seem fair that somebody may have just come to the district but be a, a sixth grader, and yet you have somebody that's in third grade that's been here for, you know, in the, in the district for a long time. But I don't know how to move that from the concrete to, to make it concrete, rather than very subjective, and who's more worthy. And I also want to mention that there is, that there is an appeal process, and that, that each individual case can be, if parents want to appeal it, it can be taken up all the way up to the county board. So individual cases can be heard and will be heard. Dr. Noel? Okay. All right, well, we will come back to this in, we will come back to this in two weeks, and you can give us any information after this item. Thank you so much for your patience. This has been a, a long discussion, but I think a fruitful one, so thank you, and we'll see you in two weeks. We are very late for our break, so with no further objection, we'll take a ten-minute break and then come back and move on. It is now, I don't have my glasses on, let me see what time it is. It is now nine forty, so we are obviously running significantly behind on the agenda, although that was an important topic. We will get through what we can. I would like to hopefully be able to get to F6 if possible. Next up is F3, the annual report on technology. Dr. Hayden?
Hello?
Dr. Hayden is our Director of Research, Evaluation, and Technology.
Okay, so I have what I hope is a, a brief report, because you have a lot of information on the sheet I gave you. I'm going to start out by saying that on, on here, we can see the district webpage has the current technology plan, and the current plan is from two thousand and eight to, through two thousand and thirteen. And so that plan has a lot of information in it, a lot of data on the schools, and so I'm not going to repeat all that right here. One, one number that I will put in here is that in the elementary district, we have one thousand two hundred and twelve computers for students and staff, and in the secondary district, it's two thousand computers. So this is a, this is just a basic number of, giving you a, a kind of a overview of the number of computers in our two districts. So it's a pretty large number, it's spread all over the place, and it's a lot of work for our technicians, both at sites and the district technicians, to keep everything up and running and going smoothly. So we can go to the next slide? This is sort of a historical background now. I came here to the district around three and a half years ago, and one of the things that we'd been struggling with was a program called SASE XP. Now, when I got here, SASE XP was in, dying, and a lot of people were saying, well, what should we go to? There were some strong suggestions that we go to Ares by several- There were some strong suggestions that we go to Ares by several staff members. And about six months into being here, we decided, okay, we've got to do something. And so the primary thing that was a huge thing for us to do was to go to a new student information system. We put that out for an RFP, we got all sorts of documentations, we looked it all over, and turns out that Ares was the best system that we could find for the price. One of the things I should let the board know is that, starting next year, we will actually start saving money on having gone to Ares because it took- it was going to take three years to actually pay for it, and then after that, we actually saved money. So Eric, for your-
Thank you, we just found one of our budget cuts.
Yes. There was a- we're actually making money now because we went to Ares when we did. After we went to Ares, we had a lot of other software-type programs that we needed to implement. And it was a decision sort of by me and by our Coordinator of Technology, John Beatty, and of course, some other people, that our software infrastructure was way behind, and we needed to get that up to speed first. Once we got some of the software in place, then of course, the next thing is going to be hardware, because our hardware infrastructure is also aging and getting very slow. So these are the things that we went for. This is Destiny, it's a library system that we had to replace. We- it was almost mandated that we adopt some sort of software for our English learner programs by- for categorical monitoring and so forth. So we went with Edgiosoft, and that happened about two years ago. Now for the elementary district, we've gone with GradeWorks. We're having some problems with GradeWorks, and we're trying to work those problems out. But we'll see where we go. Right now, the reason why we went to GradeWorks is that we needed to have a standards-based report card for the elementary school district. We looked at all the programs out there, and this was a program that was both cost-effective and had what looked like a really nice product. But unfortunately, there has been problems with it. And if they don't get the problems fixed, we'll have to abandon it, and I don't know what we're going to go to at that point. But anyway, we just approved Edgiosoft for the elementary school district, so now both school districts will have Edgiosoft. It'll make a seamless product that goes all the way through. TeleParent, you guys have already heard about TeleParent, and we had the T-Fire emergency. Starting last week, we actually started using TeleParent for attendance at two schools in the district. There were a few bugs, we've worked them out. We're now getting some more data on how TeleParent is working, one junior high and one elementary school district. It looks like it's working very well. And so we're going to probably expand that sometime next week to more schools, and I hope within the- by the end of February, all schools will be doing attendance with TeleParent. Schools are also using TeleParent for messages, for announcements, and I just want to caution the schools not to use it too much, because that's a problem, you overuse it. But it's been a really nice new software product that we've put on. The Exchange Server is something that about a year and a half ago, the complaints about just having Pegasus and about forwarding mail and using mail and all, Milk's shared calendar, we finally decided we'd go to an Outlook Exchange Server. We were not excited about doing that, but it seemed to be the only choice that we had available, and so we bought the hardware and we set the system up. We've had quite a few transition problems, I'm sure that some of you are aware of them. We've been slowly working them out. We had a major problem that occurred about three weeks ago, and it turned out that it wasn't our problem. And that's about all I want to say on that right now. But it took us about three weeks to figure out it wasn't our problem, even though we asked the people who had the problem to fix it, and they said it wasn't their problem, but I won't say anymore on that one. But we finally got the- I think we finally got the email and internet problems fixed and worked out, and we should be having- we should be getting back on track with that. Outside people should be able to connect to the school district at this point in time. Unfortunately, though, all the problems that we're having on the Exchange Server is taking one of our three precious technicians almost a full-time to maintain, to manage the Exchange Server. And so in the fall, with talks with Dos Pueblos, they had decided that they wanted to go to Gmail, and we pretty much said, do it as a pilot. And a lot of school districts have gone to and said, add free Gmail. And it has a lot of extra applications that come with it for schools. And I know that several school districts locally are using this Gmail function, as are a lot of universities. And so Dos Pueblos has found it to be very beneficial, they have no problems with it, and they really like it, and it has a lot of neat features that we don't get with the Exchange Server. So we've made a decision that we're going to abandon the Exchange Server and go to Gmail. And that will be taking place in a planned, slow process. It'll need some training for some people to do this, and so that's one of the things we're also going to be changing. Like I say, in the next couple of months, you will be seeing Gmail become our email. And that's about it for the software. I'm sure there's going to be some more software, but these are the big, major software projects that we needed to get moving and get out of the way. And we've pretty much done that at this point in time. There's going to be more things coming up that we're going to have to be doing, but now we've got the software, we need to go to hardware. In terms of the software, this is a history of our bandwidth, and you can see, we started in two thousand and five at ten megabits per second. In terms of our bandwidth, that's how the internet comes to our schools. And right away, we realized that was too small. We went to fifteen, but that didn't solve any problems. We went to twenty-five, still didn't solve the problems. This year, we went to fifty, and I thought for sure fifty would take care of some of our- the slowing down of the internet and access to the internet by our labs and our schools, but it still didn't solve all the problems. So next year, we're going to a hundred and fifty, and I just believe that should do it, but I- we have in the contract that we can expand past a hundred and fifty if we need to. Whoa. Anyway, so we'll see how a hundred and fifty does. Also, we've had some supposed problems with the elementary schools in terms of the pipeline and to get to them, which is ten megabits. And so I had it written into the contract that you- the board passed just- was it last meeting?
Yes.
That we can expand that to thirty or forty if we need to, twenty, thirty, or forty if we need to. And we'll- once we get to a hundred and fifty megabits, we'll see whether we need to expand that. So this is this history, and this is where we're at right now, is that we've got all these in place, we've got this in place, and so next year should be a good year in terms of software. Why don't you go to the next slide? These are things that we still need to do. And I mentioned hardware. There's a lot of switches, and especially at the head end, there's some switches that are ten years old, fifteen years old. There's hardware that is, at this point in time, just- it has no guarantees on it, it has no new software, we can't upgrade it, we just have to replace it. And so we're going to now start a process of replacing the major hardware in our district, starting at the top, which is where you have to have it replaced first, and going down to each of the school sites. It's going to probably take a couple of years to get all of it replaced, but I'm going to try and get the major parts replaced by the end of this year.
And this is why my joke about finding a budget cut was just a joke. We do need to continue to spend in this area.
Well, and hopefully, this- most of the spending will be a little softer on the budget because we're going to use the Microsoft voucher money to reimburse us for a good fifty, sixty, in some cases, a hundred percent of the cost of this hardware. So it won't be that big of a blow to the budget. Like I already mentioned, that we may need to go to twenty megabits for the elementary district in terms of their pipeline to get to the internet. We don't have an inventory system. When I came to the district, I guess there had been one several years earlier, but I think it was budget cuts that eliminated that position. And so there- I really am flying blind in terms of what I have at what sites and what's going on. And so that's something, we have developed now an online inventory system, we're testing it out, and once we get that up and running, we're going to be using it for the technology. And I- it's a homegrown online service, but we really need a district, a professional online inventory system, but we don't have one. So I'm making my own. We know that we want to go to VoiceOverIP, and Dave can speak about this one, too. Our telephone system is- how old, Dave? Well, it's falling apart in some cases, and if it fails, there's nothing to replace it with in some cases. Isn't that correct? He's shaking his head. And so we need to go to this, and we're trying to get the switches and all the equipment ready to do this. And it's- there's a budgetary problem that we're going to be facing, because that's going to cost money, and we don't have money, so.
Yep, there are some savings associated with that as well, but it's a lengthier discussion.
Yes. Parent portals to Ares and to EasyGradePro, this is one of the things that we're going to be working on. Right now, Ares has a gradebook. It's an okay gradebook, but it's nowhere near as good as EasyGradePro. Problem with EasyGradePro, it doesn't integrate with Ares, so you can't take attendance on it, you can't do grades on it, and those type of things that you'd want a gradebook to do. They've come out with a web version that they promised they're going to be doing that. DP is going to be piloting it. If we can get that up and running, then schools will have the choice between Ares gradebook and EasyGradePro. So we're working on that one. My staff has been- I've been so understaffed for so long, and Brian knows this, we finally this year got back to the same staffing numbers that you had back in two thousand and four. There were times when I was down to just one technician in the entire district. And so we finally have the staff, and one of the things I want to do with the staff is to make sure that there's always a staff member that can go to the sites and do small groups training on any of the software that the district is maintaining. We haven't had that capacity, we really need it because the sites need our help at times. So this is something that we're going to be doing next year. And finally, where I'm going to be able to do that. Switch to Gmail, I've mentioned that. Producing standards-based report card for next year, I'm sure hoping we can get GradeWorks working there. And this is a huge elephant in the living room that we don't have any staff to do. Now, this is a process that's between our Director of Curriculum, Cynthia White, and myself, is that we need to develop a better district plan for putting technology into the curriculum. We haven't really done that, and we need to do that. And so that's something that I'm hoping to use Wayne Cole and some of the TOSSAs and some EETT money for professional development and training. That's a big project for next year, I'd like to get that started next year. And it's going to- I don't know where we're going to go with that right now, because it's- we haven't had any staff people to develop it at this point in time. So we just got the Director of Curriculum, what, six months ago? So that's been the problem here. So that's the state of technology, the history of it, and where we're hoping to go. And I look forward to any questions you might have.
Board members? Mrs. Deacon?
First of all, I think going to the Gmail option is- it sounds like a really good thing to do. I did have a question. It looks like the secondary teachers really like EasyGradePro, is that correct?
That would be a correct statement, but it hasn't integrated with Ares in any way or form, so it's been kind of a, you know, a problem there.
Right. And yet, for elementary, we're using GradeWorks. Does EasyGradePro not have the elementary- is it not adaptable for elementary use, or is it the standards-based component that's the problem?
It's the standards-based report card component, and that's mainly the only- main reason why we went to GradeWorks was to be able to develop that, and EasyGradePro doesn't have that, doesn't have plans for it, and so that's why we would go to that. If EasyGrade- if GradeWorks can work in the way we want it to, it's actually a very nice program.
Actually, yeah, several- lots of our teachers use EasyGradePro for their grading, but GradeWorks has a gradebook in it, a component, that we're trying to- that's some of the problems, is getting that piece in place. And we were even talking about secondary schools using the GradeWorks gradebook piece at some point. We're still working with that company, but we need to make that decision very soon. Davis has been working extremely close with them.
Mr. Herron?
First of all, thank you very much. I've been happy to have the report, and I'm happy to see the progress being made just since December. And especially since you say the upgrade to switches might even be this year, because in our discussions, we were talking about two-nine, two-ten for some of that stuff. So I'm happy to see that that's moved up. You talk about Edgiosoft, but then in here, you said unless we go to AmesWeb. What is AmesWeb, and have we already bought-
Yeah, when I wrote this up, there were some real last-minute discussions about possibly going to AmesWeb. I mean, as of two weeks ago, it was still kind of up in the air whether we were really going to go to Edgiosoft or go to AmesWeb. Since then, I've actually talked to the people at AmesWeb pretty- quite a bit, had some good talks with them, and it turns out that they're not ready to do some of the things that we need to have done in order for us to go to AmesWeb. It's a great instrument, it's a great- teachers love AmesWeb, but it won't do the things we need to have it do. So I think we're going to still use AmesWeb in the schools. Mike Furlong and I can't remember-
Matt Quirk.
Yeah, Matt Quirk is- or UCSB are using it in three schools, is it?
No, they're actually just using it in Franklin right now.
I think they're going to expand to three schools.
They're going to expand. It's with a response-to-intervention model, and AmesWeb uses a DIBELS type. I don't know if you've heard of DIBELS? It's an assessment for literacy. And AmesWeb provides a structure and software that you can get graphs and track your students' progress. So it has some nice functions, and you can use it outside of the Edgiosoft and GradeWorks report card. And so Mike Furlong is planning to go and move that forward. The company is willing to do this, it's all for free. He's gotten this through a grant, and then free use of AmesWeb. So we may be using that in a couple of our other schools. We're going to talk about that actually on Thursday with the principals.
Okay. But Edgiosoft is the one that-
Yes, it will be the-
We paid for it and we're going to go forward with.
Yes.
On the upgrade elementary schools to twenty megabytes as available, can you just let the other board members know? I think you said there were three schools that currently have the ability to get to twenty, but the other ones- Cox doesn't have the capability.
Right.
What's going on with Cox and getting that availability?
When Cox- our schools are in communities, and Cox has a policy of making sure there's a certain amount of availability, and they won't go past that. So let's say they have twenty percent of the bandwidth is being used, and they won't go past that because they don't want to jeopardize having community households or companies go down because of peaks of bandwidth and those type of problems that can occur. So they have out in the communities, capacity for certain different communities. Well, when they put the capacity in at ten megabits for us, some of those communities have now gotten to their max, and so there's no more room to go up from ten to twenty for our schools. We can't just go say, go up. They- no, they can't. And so there's only like three schools that they know of that they probably can go up. But at the same time, when they reach the max in a community, they then put on a time schedule to actually increase that, so they can go up in those communities. And so it's a schedule issue. They may be able to do three schools now, but maybe in six months, another two, maybe in a year, another four. So that's what we- we can't just do it when we want to do it, we have to wait till Cox can do it, too.
Off the top of your head, do you know which three those are?
No, they didn't tell me when I asked them. And it's not even sure that they can do those three schools until they actually- they take a look at their data. But they are upgrading all of the communities, and if we- they know, now that they know we want to do this, they'll build that into their plan.
Okay. The State Superintendent of Education just announced that he's eliminating a tech survey.
Yes.
Can you tell us about that? And does that- is it a voluntary getting away with, or is it just arbitrary, we can't do it anymore?
I think we can still do it if we want to, but it's not mandatory, and it's not much effort by the- I believe it's the one that the principals do, and so I'll probably ask them to go ahead and do it anyway if it's- as long as it's just a voluntary.
Because that gives you a lot of data that's in your tech report, doesn't it? Some data.
Yes and no. The data that it gives us, by the time it's published, is a year old and not necessarily that useful. So yes, it gives us data, it kind of gives us a sense of where things are going, but I don't really find it that valuable for the school district.
Okay. The other thing you don't find very valuable, I think you told me, was the edtech profile survey, although it's the one thing that is available, and your report is full of data about that. And your report you just gave us said that you're going to improve to fifty percent this year.
Yes.
And go to ninety percent by two thousand and thirteen. And that's due to go out in February, this month.
Yes, we're going to be sending out notices to the teachers to please complete the edtech survey. The edtech survey is actually- could be a really decent thing to use. The problem with it is that, well, you know, I have a specialty in surveys and psychology for my background. The survey, if you go look at- The survey, if you go look at it, have very long questions with long, the STEM is long, the answers are long, multiple parts. It makes the survey be very difficult for teachers to fill in. And so I'm going to ask the teachers to fill it in. And I want to see the results, but it, it diminishes the value to me because of the way in which they wrote it. And now, since they've written it, they're stuck with it. So it's one of those type of catch-22s. It's.
What, how do you intend to get the elementary schools from 22% to 50% this year?
I'm going to badger them.
Well, badgering doesn't, you and I both know badgering doesn't work.
Well, I'm going to try.
Is there a carrot, is there, you know, is there a carrot that can be used? Can we do anything for you to help?
Well, okay, there are, when I talked about this curriculum down here, one of the things that I've been talking to some of the TOSSAs about and talking to Robin about is that we need to get back to the point where we actually have tech leaders at each of the schools. Now, there actually are probably tech leaders at each of the schools, but they really haven't been meeting with the district or doing anything. And so some of this is just simply district leadership where we haven't had anybody in a position to do the district leadership. So that's one of the things that we're going to try and work on. If we had people at each of the school who we could count on to be the tech leaders and there was solid communication and plans, then they could get the teachers to fill in the survey. So it's a, it's a matter of just setting things in motion.
If you send out the same survey with the same expectation, with the same modus, you're going to get the same results.
I think we would.
Yeah, so we need to come up with a way to, I mean, in my business, if I wanted a survey done, I gave the secretary a gift, if she could get the agents to do something. Is there any way we can use a carrot to get more than 22% of the teachers to fill these out?
Well, actually, if you read the tech plan, there was mention of using exactly that. Schools that got the tech, got the highest percentage, maybe we would give them something from the Microsoft voucher money, things of that nature. Right now, actually, Rob and I have a plan to reward certain teachers who have gotten awards from the Partners in Education with a, and kind of premature in announcing this, but with a tour of the ATK plant. So there are things like that we are doing right now. And I completely concur with you. We need to kickstart some of these things.
Yeah, I, I really agree on that. The plan calls for a ed tech profile from students or a Nets-like program.
Yes, and that program was, unfortunately, that survey was canceled about a year ago and there's developing a new one. So I'm kind of stuck with either having to develop one or wait until a new one is developed by that organization. The Nets.
The plan says there's a group that's doing that, so that group doesn't exist?
The group exists, but they, they pulled the survey that they had that was existing and we're waiting for the new one to come out.
And Mr. Heron, I just want to remind you that other board members may have questions here, so.
Great questions.
Okay, but infrastructure is fantastic, administration is fantastic. The elephant, which directly affects our kids, is an elephant. And so, once you get the infrastructure and admin, let's work on the elephant.
I agree.
All right, other board members? Mrs. Cordero?
One question that, if it's not quick, you can just table it and we'll come back to it. And that is just, as we're talking about the different schools using different programs and the different, and the elementary using a different program from the secondary. And I'm wondering, as we were, as I was reading through this and as I was listening to you, how does that play out for the parent who's trying to access some of the information and the, and the whole idea of the parent portal? Does the parent, is the portal going to be all, are they going to, is it, will it articulate with all of them? So that parents can basically, once they learn it in elementary school, it won't be dramatically different when they try to access information at secondary?
Well, yes and no. The answer is yes and no. Right now, it is separate. The Ares portal is separate from the Easy Grade Pro portal. But we're working on plans to make it so that you can actually have a link and you can sign in and then you can go to either of the two portals from a link. So we're working on a system to make it so that it will be seamless for parents, but you've got to have some patience here. Maybe next year, especially if Easy Grade Pro actually can develop their link with Ares, then that'll solve a lot of these problems. So, working on it.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
The two things that I would like to discuss briefly. One is, when you're talking about developing a district presence for technology in the curriculum, there's also the element of actually just teaching technology that I see as a big hole. And I was really struck by it when I was at Franklin earlier this year. And I've been into many computer labs at, at elementary schools. And what you see is maybe kids have gotten basic instruction on how to use a mouse and they're working on the software that is loaded. What I saw in there, and they had a student teacher in place, and he was actually teaching, how does a computer work? And I was like, wow, that is missing. That is missing from our schools. And the other thing that I really worry about is the website issue. I worry about our district website in, in terms of we keep making more and more demands on what should be up on the website and how timely information should be up there and so on. But then I really worry about our site websites. We don't, two of our high schools keep their sites quite current. And the other secondaries are kind of semi-useful. Elementarys, there's maybe one. I think Harding has a really useful and fairly active website that's within the neighborhood schools. And I really feel like, SBCEO has said that they would, they'll help school sites put up the websites, but then there's the whole question of who puts the information on. SBCEO can't do that. You have to have somebody, you have to have a tech leader or somebody at a school site who's willing to do that. And, and I just feel like maybe our elementary district needs some sort of standard website that they all use. You just change the, the format slightly. In terms of, you know, this is the Harding Hawks and these are the Franklin Eagles. And, but a lot of districts do that so that they, the sites look similar and they're, they're easier to maintain.
Actually, one of our schools is buying a license to use a website that does exactly that. It doesn't cost a lot of money. It is a lot of work to, to do this website stuff and we don't have the staff. And the schools don't have the staff. And that's why this one site is buying a, a site that actually manages your website and allows you to do real easy upgrades to it. I, I don't know the answer. I completely understand everything you've said. We've been struggling with many of those issues ourself. And how do we, where do we go with them? And I don't know. We actually just, about one month ago, put our, we, we're now using a company. It only costs like $1,000 a year or, I think, I think it's less than, I think it's $90 a year or something like that. I can't, I mean, it's very inexpensive to actually host our website because it's going to save the district money to do that. There are, things move so fast. And if you don't have a, a software company or an outside source that can move as fast as things are moving, then you get left behind. And that's exactly what you're talking about. Some of our sites are left behind with really old technology.
Well, and parents don't have access to current information.
That's right.
So it's, it's very, and students don't have access to current information. And once they feel that their website is not useful, even if it has things like the SBCEO portal on it, they, they just don't go.
I agree.
Any other comments?
Well, I just want, just to tag on to that, that I think activating links for, to the teachers would be a number one priority. I mean, if you go to a school website, it would be really nice to be able to, to find an active link to a teacher.
I think one of the things the board needs to understand is that the district doesn't control the site webpages. We have any staff for it and we don't actually have any control over it. And I, I would, I would love to be able to have a server and we could have a person maintaining the server and we could standardize it and have all the sites go to the district server for their web hosting. Where are we going to get that money? Where are we going to get that person?
Mr. Heron?
Yeah, SBCEO will provide us a site, a website. Very easy to use. For the last, when I was working for the past three years, you know, I paid for 250 websites for teachers.
Yeah, I know.
Very easy to use. So it's there and it's easy to use. You know, it bothers me when I go to a, a school site and I see the principal's name from two years ago, a year ago, you know?
I know.
And then you're telling your, your students to go to that website to access the portal. What do they, what do the families see? You know, they see that it's not even relevant anymore. And when you see what the portal can do, and we saw a demonstration of it, they can go to the World Book, look at a, an article on volcanoes, push a button and it's in Spanish or it's in Japanese or it's in Chinese. I mean, the data, this curriculum is there and it is simple.
I know, and that's why, that's one of the reasons for this one right here, where I want to make sure that it's not just Steve Keefly who's going to the schools, but it's district personnel going to the schools, training the teachers on the portal at the center. We're paying for it for the elementary and secondary district. We ought to be using it.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Hayden. We do have public comment on this.
Lane Wheeler?
Thank you, and I appreciate the survey and the, the depth. I was just happy there were still requests to speak over there. I thought they maybe had been exhausted this evening. I would like to suggest a couple of things. Incentivizing the survey, maybe it's through the education fund or through some private donations. But, you know, giving teachers a reason to fill this thing out with some real credibility and some with, some real intent, I think would be an excellent idea. And I think you mentioned that, Mr. Heron. Working conditions are always an important consideration when we start looking at the technological element. Most, many of the advances that have taken place at the secondary have been because people have been driven and, and have had an interest in this and have really, you know, taken it on themselves to go beyond the call of duty and, and create those links. And as we start making that, that piece of the technology more universal, we're going to have to provide the proper training for our employees and have the proper resources available. I was happy to hear how many computers are in the district. I was saddened not to know the age of those computers because we all know that technology, especially computers, is about a three-year technology. And then it becomes pretty outdated. And having worked in a classroom where I was scrounging computers that were five and 10 years old, I know exactly where that is, especially in the elementary. It's really exciting to see innovation, especially like the Google product is being piloted right now at Goleta, at Dos Pueblos. Todd Rickman has been one of the major sources out there. He's a teacher on site and has really gotten some very exciting news about how economic this source would be and the power of the source. So you might want to check with Todd to find out more about the actual implementation of this. I am really concerned about proper training for educators, especially certificated employees. It's easy to say that these things are simple to use, but when you're sitting in your classroom, working with a slow link on an outdated computer and it's 5:00 in the afternoon and you don't have an immediate resource to call, to flip that switch to get the product to work, it can be really frustrating and really prevent the kind of, I think, increase we want to see with our employees using technology. And I would encourage you also, again, site council training has been offered by CTA and through SBTA. We've, we've been to a number of sites. I think there's a number of sites that really need to be brought up to speed with that because site councils have been the primary, one of the primary sources of purchases of technology in the last few years. As sites have dedicated a portion of their site funds to educating their teaching staff and their students. It's just like writing. We know that once teachers start using the technology, it trickles down to the students. So those are some things I'd like to address with you and I thank you for the time.
Thank you. And Mr. Heron?
Just real quick, there is a website you can go to that does give all the ages of all of our computers. And it's, it's a year old, but it, it does give them all. And, but it's, it's still, it's the most recent report we have and it's the one that the governor, that the superintendent is going to take away. But the reason for the carrot or the, the survey, and I think you need to come up with these bullet points, is why are they doing it? What's going to be the outcome? It's going to be used to figure out how to train them for that, make that elephant go away. And so if you come up with a bullet of, what's in it for the teacher? Not just the gift, not just the prize, but why are they doing it? Why are they being asked? I mean, I look at that data and there's a lot of information there that you can use for training. And the teacher have to understand that if we have the data, they're going to get the training. So I, I mean, and Mrs. Parker and I sat through a class a couple of days ago and I can, I have six bullet points, I'll share them with you. It was a microcosm of what's going on in the schools. And here it was, right in our own building. So it was interesting.
Yes, thank you. I would prefer at this time for us, I'm sorry, Dr. Hayden and Mr. Hetjung, to postpone F4, which is the report on city, overlapping city and school districts land title interests at various school campuses. And F5, report on calculation of similar school rankings for subgroups. We do have Mr. Price here and I would love to talk about F6, the discussion of audio taping board meeting closed sessions. This is something that I had requested to be on an agenda. As it came up, for me, a number of months ago, that I started really considering. Obviously, most school districts do not tape their closed sessions. We do so for a specific purpose and you've seen what the resolution looked like. That was originally passed in May of 2006. But I first became concerned about security issues, especially when we are taping personnel matters. And so my initial thought was maybe when we're in closed session, we should revamp the resolution so that we're not taping personnel matters. However, in looking at what some of the other school districts do that do tape, I realized that maybe, and also thanks to a suggestion from Dr. Sarvis, that there might be two other solutions that were a little bit simpler than, you know, we push the button here and we don't push the button there. One is that Dr. Sarvis's suggestion was that recordings be stored off-site so that they're not here at the district office, but perhaps at our legal counsel's office. And Mr. Price could address that in a moment. And the other thing that most districts do is they have a finite period of time that they keep tapes. They have a time when they eliminate them. Instead, ours simply says a minimum period of one year. Our bylaws, and of course, this is all around, it would be all around Brown Act issues. And so maybe Mr. Price can address this, but our, our bylaws state essentially that you have 90 days to bring forward a complaint, a closed session Brown Act complaint. And I believe that's part of the Brown Act itself. And so my suggestion would be that we change the language of, from a period of at least one year from the date of the last closed session to something along the lines of two 90 days or 100 days from the last closed session, at which point the tapes will be destroyed. And so, Mr. Price, can you address this before we take board member comment on it?
I would suggest that if you're going to modify it, that 120 days because although there's the statute of limitation in the Brown Act that you referred to, it's also possible that related types of actions could be brought a little further out. So I would say 120 days is a minimum. Maybe even another 30 or 60 days beyond that, just to be on the safe side. The point of keeping the tapes for any length of time in part is to protect the board in the event that there are claims that are made from the outside with respect to the propriety or legitimacy of any of your closed sessions. Otherwise, you wouldn't have any record of what was said or not said that you would be able to access in a closed hearing with a superior court judge. So if the direction is to keep it, keep the tapes henceforth off-site, then I would be happy to offer my office. I have an 1896 safe that is very heavy and, and very protected.
Thank you. All right, board members? Mrs. Cordero?
I was thinking maybe 180 days. Just because I think it's, we're going to keep them, that seems like a reasonable amount of time. I like the idea of having them off-site. But I, I still have a bit of reservation about taping the confidential personnel items. And I know that was what had originally raised this concern for you. And I guess I wanted to ask you why simply moving them off-site? And I guess I wanted to ask you, why simply moving them off-site, sort of, address that for you?
Well, one of the issues for me was security. Well, there, there are two real issues that I see. One is simply security. And I think that it's, even if they're in a, some sort of locked cabinet here, that there are still issues to who could have access to keys and so on. But then the other issue is if there are, if somebody, I mean, we, we've obviously, we've had this example where a district employee may incorrectly think that, that he or she is being spoken about in closed session, because sometimes the language is a little bit obscure. And I could be, I have concerns about things coming up, closed session tapes being requested for lawsuits, and, and, and that's a worry. And so, that would continue to be an issue, but that's what I feel is, it helps to be mitigated, that they would, they would only exist for, let's say, 180 days. Any other thoughts, Mrs. Deacon?
Well, the, I think I've had the initial reaction, perhaps Mrs. Cordero did, about why off-site would be necessarily more secure than onsite, although I, it sounds like you've got a great safe. Would, would, would Mr. Price then be responsible for destroying the tapes after the 180-day period, or would they come back here to be destroyed?
Whichever the board wanted.
So, it would be possible for simply it to be destroyed onsite? So, okay. Mrs. Cordero?
Along those same lines, would Mr. Price or his office then be responsible also for ensuring that only people with the appropriate authority were listening to those tapes? Or, I mean, I, I don't know how that's done now, who decides or how we monitor that. But if they're off-site, would, would Mr. Price's office be responsible for that?
Yes. What would happen if a member of the public came in and one of your staff members accidentally gave out a closed session tape?
You say, "And one of the staff members gave it out?"
Yes.
Well, they wouldn't. They wouldn't have access to it.
Okay. It's like Fort Knox, Mr. Price's office.
Mrs. Deacon? I do think that shortening the amount of time we keep them is a good idea, because I think that increases security. I mean, there's a turnover of what's available to be listened to, so.
Yes. 180 days sounds fine to me. Okay. Dr. Noel?
A couple of questions. I, I also wondered why off, why off-campus, so to speak? Since we have a personnel office full of confidential files, I've never heard that we had a security problem. Is there a procedure for, I'm looking at 5A, that a board member might want to go look at or listen to these? What kind of procedure is involved there?
Currently, do you mean?
Well, under, under, under whatever the scenarios are.
If you're serving them?
Here, if they're here, if they're there?
If you're a serving member of, of a school, of the school board, then you can listen to it where it is located. You can't take it away. I, I don't know. I personally, I don't know if any of us has ever taken advantage of that, of, of listening to a closed session tape. I certainly have not.
No.
So...
It hasn't been done.
But what I would expect is, especially if it's off-site, that you'd, you know, show your driver's license and they would have a list of the current school board members, and you'd be able to see it, or listen to it, I should say.
So, they wouldn't need, if one went to, to Mr. Price's office, what, what, one was, does one need a, an authorization from here to go there, or just walk in and?
No, the school board, I mean, the way that currently the resolution is written is that any member or members of the school board can go, can listen to a tape for review without authorization from the rest of the board. It's only if it's somebody that's not on the school board where we need to have action by the, by the board in terms of permitting.
I didn't even know that was an option.
It is. It's C.
Where is that?
Numbers, it's 5C, as otherwise authorized by the Board of Education. So, we could decide that, that somebody else needs to listen to it, but, but it would have to be through board action.
I see. Okay. Well, that's certainly right, yeah. We, it's, it's our privilege. We can waive it, I guess. Okay. I, I don't find any, I think the 180 days makes sense.
Okay.
Storing it with Mr., in Mr. Price's safe makes sense.
Okay. Any other comments, Mrs. Cordero?
You're both hovering over your buttons.
I was just wondering if we could act on this tonight? If, I know it's on our conference agenda.
I would, I would prefer just to bring it back as a consent item.
We can certainly bring back the new resolution. We can make those changes in the resolution and put it on consent.
Okay. And Mrs. Deacon?
And I don't want to belabor the details here, but I'm assuming there are, there's a backlog of tapes that now could be destroyed if we make this decision?
Yes.
And that also, if we're destroying them every 180 days, that's a fairly regular destruction schedule. I mean, like every two weeks, right?
Well, it would seem to me that basically every two weeks, you'd be throwing out one and getting a new one in.
Or disposing of it in a secure fashion.
Disposing it in a, in a very secure shredder, I don't know. Dr. Noel?
Are we, are we there hereby changing that schedule, that documents retention schedule?
I...
Or should we make sure that it is aligned with this?
It's, there, the ed code, no, it's the Brown Act. Anyway, in our...
Insurance schedule, that's government code.
There's, there's a, a, like a 30-day schedule. Essentially, it says for recordings, video, audio recordings, you have to keep them for 30 days. But that's not referring to closed session tapes, that's only anything that you happen to do for open session. So, there isn't anything specific about it.
Well, just to, to make it tidy, maybe we should...
Well, that, that is actually a whole other question, because this, this office is storing videotape from the first time meetings were videotaped. And we, there's probably historical value to that, but we may want to consider that at some point and put together a, a policy. I, I don't think we would ever want to make that 180 days, but it has a very different purpose. But in terms of capacity, we may at some point want to consider a audiovisual retention schedule for open session. All right. It's, sorry. It would ruin her work, she, it's been archived forever. They are treasures. They are treasures. Mrs. Cordero?
I don't know if that's, if that's off our agenda topic or not, but I'm just wondering if we would, because it seems to me there's, is historic value to keeping the tapes of the, of the meetings. If there's just some other way that we could keep them so that they aren't as cumbersome.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll discuss that as a, as a future item or something to discuss. All right. Well, I think we have sort of a, a direction to go with that. We have already dealt with the consent items, coming events. I believe that we discussed all those before. Any board comments and correspondence? Mrs. Deacon?
I just wanted to briefly mention the, the seminar that Mr. Heron and Dr. Sarvis and I attended on February 9th, and I'm forgetting what date that was, a Monday?
That was Monday. That was yesterday.
Long, long time ago.
Yeah, sorry. And there were, it was, it was actually really, really useful and beneficial. The title was Accountability in K-12 Education, where do we go from here? But two of our staff members spoke and were on panels, Michael Ortiz and Jean Rogers from, from Cleveland School, and they did a terrific job, so I just wanted to mention that.
Oh, great. Any other comments? Mr. Heron?
I'll just mention two things. I went to the 2009 Art Scholarship Award Program at the Ridley Tree Education Center, the McCormick House, and high school students were honored for their artwork. And we had eight of the 10 students in our district win scholarships. And the overall winner was Oliver Akilian from San Marcos High School. He was all, he was the best of the show. It was a very special evening. The lady who did the introductions of the students and the artwork is the Director of Education for the Museum of Art, and she talked about every single art piece in a way that brought it alive. And the eight, eight students that were there all talked a little bit, and every one of them thanked their art teacher. So, it was a great way for the art teachers to be recognized, and it was a great way for the students. And the, and the lady who did it, Pat C. Ricks, was outstanding.
Hicks.
She, Hicks?
Hicks.
Oh, I put, I have bricks, or hits, Hicks. She was absolutely wonderful, the way she described these artworks. They were, each student had three or four of their artworks on display, gorgeous. And then, I think a lot of us went to Supervisor Janet Wolf's office during First Thursday this month to view the artworks that were on display by the students at McKinney School. And that was a real pleasure to see those students and their artwork, or the, see the artwork. I don't know that I saw students, I saw the teachers.
Yes.
Met the teachers. But it was nice that Janet Wolf opened up her office for that event.
Yes. And there were students there a little bit later, and they were very pleased and proud. Everything was fantastic, and it's still there. You can go take a look at it. Mrs. Cordero?
Well, I was just gonna talk about that too, but I, since Ed has already mentioned it, I'll just follow up with that. I've been in contact with Barbara Kiani about bringing some of those, some of that artwork to display in the boardroom for a period of time. And the art teacher was thrilled about the idea of having the students' work displayed in our, in our district offices. So, hopefully, that will be coming soon, and we'll all get to see them.
Great idea. All right. Future agenda items? Dr. Noel?
Anticipating the budget cuts, one question that enters my mind is whether we maybe have, whether we may have more elective offerings in our high schools than, than we can afford, which then raises a question, how many do we have? And what, and what, and is there sort of some kind of parity between campuses? And I, I don't know the answers to those questions. So, before I start saying, "Well, let's cut there," I'd like to get some information.
Okay.
So, could we have a report?
Certainly. Would you like a listing in the board brief, or would you like a, a board report? I mean, we could do either.
Maybe, maybe the latter first and the former second.
Okay. Good.
Any other agenda items? Mr. Heron?
I just wonder, when, when will it be appropriate, or is it ever appropriate, to maybe have an update from Alan Hilton from a proactive standpoint, so the parents know that we are still thinking about it? It's just what, what his findings are. And I, I just wonder if there's an appropriate time that we just go, he's been on the job a month, maybe he has some concepts or something, or maybe you need to give us a report, but just so it doesn't look like we just aren't thinking about it anymore. And we have Alan, I'd like to hear from him possibly.
Okay. So, sort of a special ed update, where the progress is heading? Mrs. Cordero?
Yeah. I just wanted to bring up one item that I'd like us to discuss that we, I've talked about before, the possibility of holding one meeting every, you know, quarter maybe, on a school site.
Yes. And I believe that is one of our focus goals for next year.
Right.
So, we can start laying, making the plan for that.
Sure.
Good. All right.
And we have a joint city council board meeting on February 27.
Yes. So, put that, that's a Friday.
That's a Friday, 1:30.
So, we're meeting on the 24th, that's our next meeting, and then again on the 27th, because we don't see each other often enough. With that, with no further business before the board, if there is no objection, this meeting is adjourned.